Good morning, everybody. We're here for our Budget Work Session, May 24th at 8:00. We're going to basically turn the meeting and have Lance go through everything. If you have questions, go ahead and ask them. I'm not going to worry so much about recognizing each commissioner unless things get out of hand. But otherwise, thank you everyone for being here. And Mr. Manager, what was yours?
Thank you very much. I'm going to go through it. I'm going to go through the budget message. You need to approve it later for future.
Well, we do. You're right. It'd help if I read my stuff. No, that was me. That was mine. Gentlemen, we do have an agenda in front of us. Do we have a motion to approve it?
So do we.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to go through tabs 1 through 10 fairly quickly. The budget message basically is a summary of the budget, 11 through the rest are probably where we get through each department. You all ask questions or make comments, suggestions, recommendations. Again, this is my budget that I prepared for you all. Once I've discussed this budget, it becomes your budget and you guys can deliberate and make any suggestions or recommendations to modify the budget, however you see. Let's go to tab 1. I'm going to go through it kind of page by page and just highlight the main areas. Overall budget, including the general fund, enterprise fund, and other funds, is approximately $147 million. The general fund itself is $99 million. The vision, mission statement, strategic focus areas, those are the areas that you all approved during the strategic work session, throughout our budget process and our thought process. From the very bottom down there, the initial budget request started our process with $15.7 million deficit. It's primarily due to a $7.5 million increase from the school capital outlay, a $1.6 million increase in health insurance, $1.2 million increase in social services, and that was two different areas, a loss of revenue from the 4E foster care funds and four additional staff persons, and then finally $4 million from capital outlay from engineering and utilities. Page 2, we are recommending to maintain the tax rate at 69.5 cents. As you can see from the chart here in the middle compared to our peers and population, we have seen an increase in all of our sections of the adblock, real property, personal property, public utilities, motor vehicles. In all of the adblock, we saw a net gain of $1.6 million and our tax rate increased from 98.1 cents to 98.4 cents. Percent, excuse me. And again, stop me if you have any questions or comments during this process. We can work on these discussions. On page 3, this budget recommends a dedicated 5.5 cents to capital reserve or debt service fund, which will be elaborated later on in our discussions today. The value of the penny went up from $752,993 to $775,693. We are projecting a 24% or $2.3 million increase in sales tax. The pandemic helped us here as more of our residents stayed local and online shopping has been a point of everyday life here, as we've become to know that. Not to mention that we budgeted very conservatively with the unknown impacts of pandemic issues. So a combination of the two led to such an increase in our sales tax. Page 4, other key revenue changes. One to bring your attention, the election fees increased due to municipal elections, which will have offsetting expenditures. The EMS fees decreased for two reasons. The collection rate dropped from 58% to 53% due to pandemic, and the number of treat-to-no transport increase, which is basically, we're out there, we go out there to treat patients, but we do not transport what they do to the hospital. Got a question.
The collection rate for EMS, are we renegotiating or looking at other options?
We have not. We've been using the same company forever and a day.
Pretty low, eh? Rodney, 58%?
It's a bit higher. The pandemic has hurt very badly, but it's usually in the upper 70s, which they projected was one of the highest in the state, but it's the pandemic.
Okay. Thank you.
And the 70s is a year end, right Rodney? The 70% is at the year end, after everything's done.
Correct.
Yeah, so this is still going to be lower than that because they just sent out bills and that's getting counted in the collection rate. It's not done yet.
Okay. Building inspection fees, we anticipate to increase based on the past growth of single-family dwelling and projected developments in our southwestern corner of the county. We're projecting a decrease from the KB Reynolds grant. This will be the last year of funding for the integrated health programs. We'll need to be thinking about what to do with that program next year. We need to keep it. If we want to fund that program, it seems like it's a very strong program, but we need to pull together the performance measures on those.
So, Devin?
Go ahead.
The paragraph here says the county has days of negative funds to cover the cost for another year.
That's from the, we got KB Reynolds grant, and so those funds are going to be reduced to nothing this year, but we have one more year of funds, KB Reynolds grants to fund that program. And then next year, we'll have to figure out if we will want to, the county wants to pick up a tab on continuing that program.
Is there something that could be partly funded by our MOE money?
He said, "Could part of that money be funded by the MOE funds?" Environmental health fees are anticipated to increase, again, same as building inspections due to the growth in the county. Page 5, the county will be losing around $760,000 due to the state not funding the 4E foster care program, and we're working with Cardinal right now to make up some of this funding through the subcapitation agreement, which we're anticipating to get $1 million this year and $800,000 next year. Project a decrease in interest earned, which is pretty explanatory. I'm recommending appropriating $3.5 billion of the fund balance to the general fund, and that will consist of $2.5 billion in the normal plug that we do every year, $145,493 in anticipated unearned Dick Energy incentive, $50,644 from the public health escrow, and that's for vehicle and some part-time dental assistance. Again, $308,706 from the KB Reynolds grant for the integrated health program, $500,000 in CARES Act to cover the COVID-19 claims that we had this year, and $20,000 in federal forfeiture and other restricted funds for miscellaneous purchases throughout the year so we don't have to come back, you all, every time for small purchases from the federal forfeiture funds. And then last, on this page of interest, we need the recommended increase, landfill tipping fee of $1 per ton. This was recommended by our consultant, Ray, after evaluating the life of site on land. No questions? Page 6. And again, this is just a, I hope you, once we get to tab 11 on, as people have, send the deep discussions department by department or line on by line, however you want to do it. But page 6 is personnel. Overall picture, we reduced staff by .7 positions. The recommended budget includes 6.3 new positions and eliminates 6.99 positions. There is one position for community social service technician to transport children in our custody to appointments, school visits, ceremony visitations, counseling, and placements. One environmental health specialist due to the increase in development, and that's water and septic permits, basically, four detention officers, which I would be, excuse me, one officer per night shift and two transition officers currently. They have 10 officers on days and nine officers on nights.
I got a question on that.
All right.
Why are you trying to make it even? You have less activity at night than you do day.
I'd work with the sheriff's office and the sheriff's report.
I have a pretty much situation that I feel I'm in straight from question. With night shift, there are a lot of extra duties, hard washing, linens, things like that, cleaning, mopping, all of that, so that's where we need them.
I understand that, but you're still, less activity going on at night than you do day.
Right.
So you don't need as many detention officers at night than you do in the daytime.
Again, washing laundry, drying laundry, folding laundry, separating stuff.
Details that you do not do during the daytime. You don't get on wash clothes in the daytime?
No.
Okay. Also, we were bound by state jail policies as far as observation and inspection, making sure that we check on inmates. We have to do hourly and explain the check system.
We do, right now, we're doing quarterly, so we do every 15 minutes. By the state standards, we have to do two rounds every hour at intermediate times. They can't be, they gotta be less than 40 minutes.
They document it.
Yes.
They write it down. Yeah, we have to check every inmate 70 times an hour, and then if the person's on a special watch, we have to do at least four times. And part of ours, and this also falls into play with part of our suicide reduction prevention program here, because as you know, we've had some issues that we're trying to curtail. Yeah, I got you. Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Sheriff. Thank you.
Okay. In existing positions, we have eliminated one part-time position in legal and created one full-time position. This is a savings of $66,000. Youth Services eliminated three positions and spread the workload and reclassified position to administrative assistant 3. How much of a savings? Okay, I'm sorry. Instead of $66,000, it's $66. I'm sorry. Huge difference there. Youth Services eliminated three positions and spread the workload and reclassified position to administrative assistant 3. Saving $49,000. Social Service reclassified position to child support agent 1, so they can present cases in court and reclassified position to accounting technician to reflect the duties that they are currently doing. Page 7, positions that we are proposing to eliminate is inmate litter program officers. These positions are recommended to be eliminated, recommending eliminating, again, one paralegal position and making the other full-time. In Youth Services, reiterating that eliminate three positions and reassign duties to other staff members. They're also starting to build for services. And Water and Sewer eliminated two positions as we're contracting out these services with EnviroLink, and it seems to be going very well with the contracting out of those services. And then, as you see at the bottom, there were 11 positions that were not recommended by staff.
I just want to know about telecommunications positions. Why y'all choosing that?
We just, we didn't feel like it was necessary at the time.
I thought we had a lot of turnover.
They do, but we have a lot of part-time to be able to fill in. On the bottom of page 7, going over to page 8, our, this budget recommends a 3% merit increase for eligible employees. On page 8, the proposal is a tiered approach to encourage high performance. An overall score of 3.25 or lower would not receive an increase at all. An overall score of 3.25 to 3.499 would be, say, a one-time bonus, not tied to the base pay, and then a 3.5 or higher would have a 3% raise added to their base pay. The cost of that would be $455,000 to the county.
So it's basically pass fail.
What?
So it's basically pass fail.
Pass, fail, and then in the middle.
So what's the measuring tools?
We have a performance evaluation that we did with, through NeoGov, and we measure staff from 0 to 5, and it's based on a criteria of their, a different criteria.
And has there been any training sessions for department heads or folks in management type positions within a department, how to measure them?
No.
Is there going to be? Because you got some folks that naturally won't give a 5 or some that will give a 1.
I agree.
And so, I mean, if you end up with those scenarios, one, you'll have some departments that grade completely different, and you've got a pass fail system for the most part, which to me, merit-based is merit-based, and you don't have everybody getting the same thing at basically a 60-something percent. If somebody grades an 80, they ought to get higher than somebody that grades a 60.
That's correct, and that's a very valid point. The last time that we did this, we had leadership that graded and they didn't get above the, I forget, the 3.25. So they came back and said, "Well, can we regrade?" We're like, "No, you graded right the first time." But it certainly would be very valid to have a training session for that, if you guys passed that.
Well, I think my point, and I believe it's in support of Commissioner Berger, do the best you can. I don't believe it's going to be foolproof to remove the subjective nature of this thing.
Now, I agree, it won't be foolproof, but if there's not been any guidance to staff, then there's...
That's why, whatever you do to remove that subject.
How much does something like that cost, Kevin?
It won't cost anything. It's just a matter of...
Do you want to add it to the budget?
No. This is, this is a matter of, what is it that HR and management have recommended for folks to be graded on? This isn't paying somebody to come in. I mean, this is a program that we've asked them to kind of shift to. They're telling us that they've guided shifted to that, but it doesn't sound like there's been any real meat put into it.
You would hope if you have people in leadership roles like that, that they would be able to grade and be very fair, because when I grade, I can tell you that, all the ones that I grade, they don't get high scores. I don't give 5s, I barely get 4s.
So, and... Well, but is that because we don't have, I hope it's not, because we don't have the right people in the right places?
It's the way people grade.
Right.
You might grade no higher than a 3.25, but I understand your point, and I'll make sure that we have training on that.
And I guess we need a copy of that as well, because we grade three folks, and they need to be graded the same way, and I'm being told that none of them, based on the way management is set up and the way management grades, that we shouldn't be giving 5s to anybody.
That's in the eyes of the holder. If you think that I do a 5, hey, give me a 5. If you think I do a 2, that's on each individual, how they grade.
Sure. Each individual interaction.
Sure.
Those definitely shows a difference.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Lance, I do agree that I do like the fact that you have performance objectives in place to give some guidance. However, I think Commissioner Berger and I talked about this, and I think I talked with Commissioner Richardson, it is going to be hard to remove this subjectiveness from it. It's just going to be, it's going to be difficult to do. I think that when I was looking at it, one, this is 3% merit raise for eligible performance employees on their anniversary day. Is this just for full-time employees?
It's for permanent, for all the permanent employees, and actually, the new personnel boss is trying to get rid of that permanent employee. Like your library assistants work 29 and a half hours a week. So anybody who works over 20 hours a week, it's counted as FTE, it's for them, and it's merit. So if there was a COLA, it would affect your part-time people, because your part-time people are based off of, I believe it's the bottom range of whatever the job is, and then at the hourly rate, whereas this is based on merit.
Well, yeah, I've been one of those who received those evaluations that come up the line and have leadership positions to evaluate their performance and seen, witnessed firsthand, the difference in the evaluation process during a situation like we talked about. And I do like the fact that, at first, I was kind of iffy about the way, the one-time 3.5, the one-time bump versus a raise, a bonus situation raise. But I do think it's important that our employees have a pathway to midpoint and a pathway to the top end of their pay scale. Fact of the matter is, they should not retire here, 30 years, and do an outstanding job and never reach midpoint. And right there, right now, there's no conduit to getting there. And so I, so I started thinking about this a little bit more. I said, you know, I did kind of like the fact that it's a raise instead of just a one-time bonus. However, I think, I think Commissioner Berger brings up an excellent point when he talks about the person that does, the employee that averages a 4.2 and the employee that averages a 3.7, they shouldn't necessarily get the same raise based on their performance over the past year. It shouldn't be a pass fail. It should be, you know, in my mind's eye, and what I've done as a pass is, you know, the employee may get a 3% raise, and I just thought these numbers, a 4% raise or a 5% raise based on their performance. But I do like the part about, you know, the bonus. I don't just, you know, I think that's a pretty good idea. My biggest thing, as long as there's a pathway for an employee who excels and does a good job to get to his midpoint within an appropriate amount of time, and stays there long enough, stays in the job function.
Problem example, Mr. Joyner, who just retired 30 years, never made, never got high. He's at midpoint, full-time, right?
Well, but anyway.
The 3% now should help people to get to midpoint, because it isn't added to base that we've been doing the last three or four years, but it's not tiered, point taken, it's not tiered, you can't grow faster than others.
Kevin brings a good point up, so maybe we can vary some of that.
And it's, I just, that was my question too, was the scale. Where do we fall on the scale? And I take it that there's employees that fall below what's expected, that there's counseling and an action plan in order to get them in that direction. But yeah, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Also in here is the employee pay is the 1/3rd study this year, but I'm sorry.
Well, can we, so I guess, are you going to get us something? Are you going to, I guess, have some sort of session with department heads and whoever else does the grading?
I will assure you that we'll have a training session with those that are providing performance evaluations to make sure they understand how to do it and what our expectations are.
Are we going to try to do something where we break out the, instead of a pass fail, I think that was exactly what we used, that we use somewhere 3, a bonus, 4, pay raise, you know, 3.5 a pay increase of this, a 4 pay increase of this, a 4.5 and a 5. You know, just break it out so it's not just a pass.
A little bit more tiered.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I personally would like to see that.
Yeah, we can do that. Set the superstars a little bit better.
Yeah, well, I just want to reward folks that are going out there giving their all every day.
Are y'all comfortable with the bonus being the first, the idea with the bonus of this being the first tier is that, yeah, you did pretty good work this year, but it wasn't as good as it could be, so you get it this year, but you don't get it out of your base pay. If you want to move through the ranks, you need to do good consistently.
I'm comfortable with that. I'm not crazy about them scoring just a bonus level and getting the same as the top end in 4E as far as a map. Now granted, that person at the top end, you would think that they would continue at that level over time and continue to advance with a little pay raise, but I think the bonus should be less than...
We can build that into the tiers, absolutely.
Why are you still talking about merit?
Mr. Chair, my suggestion would be considering the complexity of the problem and all the points that I've heard being valid, is that we ask the manager and his able-bodied assistant to come back with a plan that addresses those comprehensively, and the best you can, his suggestions for removing this mug subjectivity before they decide a training program to get people to square away.
Okay. My thing is, since you bring up merit, you know, we want to include elected officials on this merit register so they don't get a bad wish.
Good point. What have you done in the past?
We've had the elected officials part of the process, and I was asked that, basically, well, I was told that basically that we wouldn't have to rate them, that they answered the public, so they got their performance variable, they got the 3%. The vast, sorry, that's.
Part of the same question, as far as I'm concerned.
I can't write them.
So you, you bring this to, you bring us something.
Yeah, I'm not going to get too careful in saying that if we're to bring this to a public hearing, gee, for, so if you don't mind if I can email you guys and you guys can provide me feedback?
Well, we're talking about elected officials just for clarity's sake. We're talking about the sheriff and the registered seats.
That's right.
I'll make sure we're not talking about this body. I'll make sure everybody understands we're not talking about this.
Yeah, we don't get none.
And we can structure this within the money that's already in there, so that makes it a little bit, you know, you're not changing dollars, you can just change the structure.
All right, move on. Okay, the next item is the 1/3rd study. You all have approved this past year 1/3rd study that was conducted by the Puma Triad Regional Council, and they will have a recommendation to you all late June or early July. The reason is, from the pandemic, they just have to have a chance to get with staff. They have provided one proposal already, which we're still going through right now, and we're recommending to continue that 1/3rd study and recommending $400,000 to put in there this upcoming year for that. Again, these numbers are just, we don't know when it comes back. It's going to be 300,000 or 450,000, we just, we don't know. So we are asking you all to consider that. The health insurance is a big concern. We have seen a significant increase in cost claimants, which has caused our costs to go up by 35%, and I've got Pat and, I think here, I've got Pat here to talk about the, oh, briefly mentioned, the health insurance, have discussed that because it is a big concern of ours. We, if you see on the next page, we've recommended increases for spouses, children, and family coverage. We evaluate our peers' counties, and we remain lower than what they fund, so we're going to make additional recommendations every year on slowly increasing the contribution for the employee, for the spouse, children, and family. And we also recommend using $1 million in health insurance fund balance to balance the fund for this year.
You're talking about rates charged to the employees?
Yeah. Well, right now, right now, the employees are paying a certain amount for spouses, a certain amount for the children coverage and family coverage, and we're recommending increasing their contribution to the county.
I don't understand. I just said that Rockland County's benefit package is just poor compared to everybody else, so now you're going to make it worse by increasing the rate on them?
I don't say that, but yeah, I mean, it's...
I said that. I mean, I know it is. It's terrible. The benefit package from Rockland County employees is terrible. Eden and Rees will outdo us every year. The surrounding counties are even better than ours. But now you want to increase the rate on the employees because of our bad policies?
No, it's the contribution that they make, they pay. So we're paying for their spouses, children, dependents, and family. And so ours compared to our peer counties, their contribution to theirs is a lot lower, so we're trying to bring ours up in comparison to where they are.
So for individuals, it's still free, just employee only, employee doesn't have to pay anything. It's the rate that if you have your spouse, you have children, you have family covered, we're having to go up on ourselves 20% this year for...
So we're having to have them go up?
Yeah, so we're having, we're making, having them go up to, at minimum, keep up with the pace of what we're doing.
Now, I understand that. I understand what you're saying, but you know and I know our benefits for our county employees is terrible. We don't offer a lot to these other places offering. That's what I'm saying. You know that. It says it right here. But we're going to keep increasing the only benefit that we really give to county employees?
Well, let me try to understand what you said in relation to what Mr. Travis said. I believe you said that our employees are paying less than our peer counties.
Quite a bit less than.
Mr. Travis is saying that we're worse than the peer counties.
Yeah. Benefit.
Those things.
Benefits.
Okay.
Benefit-wise.
So, he's only talking about health insurance. You're talking about more than health insurance.
Now, I'm just talking about health insurance right now.
Yeah, if you look at health insurance, Kevin, and you look at the total benefit package that a county employee gets, medical is about their only benefit they get. All these other counties offer 401K, they got, we got longevity, that's it. What else do the other counties have, Lance?
What are our peer counties? You're comparing us to peer counties.
You got the list, Burke County, you got...
We look at population, we look at property, tax base, we look at a few other things, just to track this up. People, Burke County is one, Anderson County is one, I think. I want to say Harnett County is one, Caldwell County is one.
Do we have any idea what their benefit package is?
We pulled that several years ago.
I can play it again. I don't know. I'm not familiar with it.
Mr. Chair, I suggest at this point, we're looking at the health insurance aspect only and responding to the suggestions of the manager of whatever additional benefits that we choose to lay on in the future.
So the health insurance is a problem. Hopefully, hopefully this year was an anomaly year. Don't know it, but we had around 15 high. Hopefully, hopefully this year was an anomaly year, don't know it, but we had around fifteen high claimants that had really caused this to go up drastically. I don't know.
If you look at just your people going to the doctor, you know, regular stuff, that part didn't go up that much. It's your high-cost claimants, they're the ones that, that are very expensive.
Well, I'm trying to understand what's going on. You're offering an employee three percent about a merit-based pay rate increase. You're going up over three percent of probably their salary.
Some instances, yeah.
Yeah. So they're losing.
The ones that have additional coverage, yeah.
Yeah, you see what I'm saying, you're losing. So are you pro employee or you're not pro employee?
Absolutely.
That's what this board needs to say, are you pro employee or are you against employee? Cause, cause their increase of insurance is more than their merit rate.
We can't control that.
So an example, example. And this is, so say we pay ten thousand dollars per employee for their health insurance. We only charge two thousand dollars for a spouse, where there's an eight thousand dollar differential, which is way lower. We need to be closer to the ten thousand instead of two thousand dollars.
And spouses' driving costs just like employees did.
So that's why we're trying to bring this up, not all at one time, but eventually so it matches. And all counties subsidize, don't get me wrong, all of them do, but not to the extent that we are. We need to change that, that.
Alright, so Commissioner Travis, what other benefits are you trying to throw on the table? And if we have a balanced budget, where are you pulling the money from?
I'm not trying to throw any more benefits on the table. I wish there were more benefits offered to the county employees. I'm just saying we shouldn't keep hurting them. I mean, this is why we lose people. Y'all keep hitting the benefits, we're gonna keep losing people. This is why people go to Greensboro, this is why people go to other counties. But y'all keep adding to medical, especially for working families, and you're gonna see more people leave. I'm just, that's just my, because that's the only benefit the county offers.
Okay, but that expense, where are you pulling it from?
You got, you got a capital reserve, you got, it's very healthy. We, we've done a great job over the last five or six years.
But you've got a recurring expense, a capital reserve.
You got an option to raise taxes, you got an option.
Well, the only concern I have is, is.
You understand what I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying, the fact of the matter is, you can't pay the electric bill while your savings account pretty soon, that's, you, you're going the wrong direction.
That's why you control the budget.
But, yes, you do, yes, you do. As we all know, healthcare is so upside down right now. It's, it's crazy. And we can't predict it. And yes, there is gonna be some costs associated with it. My healthcare costs more than it did, my wife's costs more than it did. She has to buy up with the state now. And we do have, I know there's some things that we've had to take, some actions we've had to take as a board because of the uncertainty of healthcare. This board right here ended healthcare for new hires when they retire. Why do we do, do we make a decision, is that decision gonna impact us? No. Is it gonna impact our kids down the road when they're sitting here trying to make these decisions on what to do? Yes. That's a thirty-year return on that decision. Do I want to go up on healthcare? No. But is there, is there a viable option for a long-term solution? I don't know. I mean, the fact of the matter is, the manager sitting here and the, and the assistant manager sitting here telling me that Human Resources has looked at this issue, looked at surrounding counties. Maybe there's another benefit that we can provide that we don't provide by the savings we realize on it? I don't know. But the fact of the matter is, it's still gonna, it costs more to do business in healthcare today than it did ten years ago. And that's just, just it, that's my opinion, Mr. Chair. Do I, I hate to do it, yeah. But, you know, I have, I carry insurance on, on my family and it costs me money. And it's cost me more money over the course of my career to keep them on it.
I think we need to be sure to also remember, we're, we're doing a third study, which is one-third of the employees, and we're doing this over three years. So everyone gets looked at, salaries get reevaluated, we're talking about developing this training program to better rate our employees' performance, to where the employees who are doing very well can get rewarded better and their salaries would, would be increased. So, so yes, you've got the good along with that, that bad in the insurance co-pays.
Can we see the document of the like-sized counties that, and what they charge their insurance? And what we have and what we propose? We don't have that document. I think that was, you know, something tangible, that would give us some insight on exactly where we are and where others are and, and what you're asking.
You'll see one extreme from, from Bunca County all the way to.
But, you know, my thing is, talking to Kevin and Charlie and him, I understand completely about health insurance. ATT goes up every year, I understand. All I'm just trying to put in your head, keep in mind that our county employees don't really have a lot of benefits compared to other cities and counties. So this is why we constantly lose people to go to better, greener pastors. We train them, they move. So just keep that in mind, that's all I'm saying. I mean, I understand about the health insurance, that's, I'm just making a point.
Well, I don't know, I don't know about your point because I don't have the facts in front of me. And I don't think you have them either. But, I, I mean, I under, I accept you. You've heard that Gilbert County treats your people better, I don't know. We need to know the facts before we make a decision. But in regards to what you presented strictly with the health insurance aspect, that sounds totally reasonable to deal with the health aspect as this part of the budget and look for those other benefits that may be comparable to Burke, Caldwell, wherever you choose.
We'll provide those to you all. And just on the health insurance part, next year, I want you all to be more involved once we get, start off early with the year, out at the very tail end of it. So make sure that you guys are involved.
It's a gagger, I must, it's a gagger when you look at health insurance.
I want you guys to see the rates.
Five thousand dollars plus per month, health insurance premium for this whole thing.
Well, one of the things that.
A lot of people make that much money.
One of the things that, that I've asked the managers to look at is that I've been contacted by local pharmacies who feel left out as a result of their ability to compete with some of the dig box stores. And I'm still not completely satisfied that we are, and we gotta have those local pharmacies. Those local pharmacies provide an invaluable service to our community. They deliver, they deliver to our shut-ins. And if you want to, if you don't believe it, just go look and see how, how many of those cars ride in the county, the entire county.
And what else did you do this week? I'm just curious, are we using our own pharmacy downstairs? That the local employees can use your own?
They have that option.
And just for clarification, I mean, this recommended budget, you're pulling a million dollars out of the general fund to put into.
The health insurance fund.
The health insurance fund. But that ultimately, you're pulling that out of the fund. Right now, we've got roughly a million and a half in that fund.
You're running dry. It used to be very healthy. Four million and that's all, just going down real quick.
In discussions, it was weird. All indications pointed this being a very bad year. But if that's not right, then we have to make some definite changes next year. We don't have.
To our plan.
To plan, to what even, even bigger than this was.
And this plan is a one, I, I, no, a few weeks ago, we heard different things, but it's a one-year plan, right? Not a three-year plan, it's a one-year deal.
Okay, yeah, we can change that for both of us.
Yeah, thanks for going back and looking at these.
So we go back out? Any of your spend this year?
I think we go back and look at the, this meeting for the last couple, three years when we got to this topic. We talked about health insurance and we, you know, and the, the sentiment then was, we're in very good shape. We're in very good shape. But there again, we talked about it back then. It's a bad year, we're not in very good shape.
Three years ago, we were.
Yeah, and so the sun was shining three years ago to now, it's cloudy and overcast.
I'm glad during the years when the sun was shining, stuck stocks and pay away in the barn for these years because not, it's a lot different.
I would definitely like to see what the cities in, in our county are, are just you're getting for healthcare. How much their, their health insurance has increased over the years? Or, or is there an option that we can group everybody together and be on one insurance plan? But I don't know.
We, we've looked at that, we've talked, I've talked, I've reached out with John and, and Chris, the internal manager at Reesville. They've looked at it in the past, it just didn't seem to come to fruition. They reminded me of what happened with the NC, ACC. We didn't have everybody together and self-loaded on it, uh, with that, so we can look at it, but it's. They may not want to be a part of us because we, this bad year we had, I wouldn't want to be a part of us.
Well, I mean, if we had a bad year, why didn't they have a bad year?
Different, I mean, different people, we.
I've been in these discussions in the past, be when I worked there, and it was bad years. And we had the same type of discussion sitting around that we're having right now. And some of the things they had to do, guess what? Exactly what we're talking about right now. Exactly what we're talking about right now.
And then, having bought some insurance for a lot of group, the idea that you're automatically gonna get a savings by increasing the size of those insured with them, doesn't work that way. There's no economy in larger numbers, it's actually an increase in cost. And a lot of places are going to flat fees. You get X amount of money, go buy your own health insurance for that reason. I'm not suggesting that, I'm just talking about health insurance.
And again, again, we might, if, if it starts to look bad next year, why not have tier? It just, it all depends on what it looks like, we don't know what's gonna happen this year. And I guess the last part of that is we had to go up, we anticipated eighteen percent increase on the post-sixty-five retirees due to an increase in the premiums and those who were pre-reliant. On that page, we have general fund, significant capital. And the first part is information technology. The two that are on here, I'd like to there to mention because I'm very limited on my experience with IT. So I think you mentioned what those two are for. One is the computer-associated hardware replacement and then the core infrastructure replacement.
Yes, so the first one is the computer replacement plan. That is a direction from you guys as a board, uh, three or four years ago when I started back here. So we didn't have agent equipment and we stayed current on our technologies. So that's actually the fourth year of the cycle, replacing all laptops and desktops through the county. There is one caveat with that. I'm actively working with departments that can receive other funding. And any department that can receive funding for those hardcover replacements, we use that funding from the state or federal or grants, so we don't pull it from our budget. So we did have a really good year this year with some of the COVID funds and things that we could replace. And then the core infrastructure is just, everything is behind the wall socket. It's your network switches, your servers, everything like that. And we are, have a five-year cycle of replacements and upgrades on those, and we're in year three of that plan.
Question. Actually, two questions. First question is, on the, the network switches and, what was it, at the nine-to-one center, is there any reason to believe that the state might start easing some of those restrictions on the cash cow they have in the bank to allow us to spend some of those nine-to-one funds? I know, you know, once that, 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 that pot of money grew so big, they listened to some of the eligible expenses in the past. Do we, we heard any rumors on that at the state nine-to-one board?
We have not, and that money is very closely guarded by a legislature. They said before, when they released it before, that it would never happen again, and it has not. We don't, we've actually restaffed it in for other things on the TDMA, TDMA radios to see if some of those funds could be freed up and, I heard it's possible, so. I wouldn't say it's impossible, but I would say it's, I don't even like it. We actually have an open request with them right now on some never fail projects where we can roll servers to other places. And they're not actually even fully funded, that entire project, so some of that is coming from that infrastructure.
Okay. And the second thing I was gonna ask that deals with IT is that I noticed in this, the governor did a press release and prioritizing some of the funding that come down from the federal government to the state. And one of the things that he put high on his list was, uh, infrastructure for broadband. And I'm just wondering, do we think there's gonna be a, any grants come available at the state level that we may need to set aside some capital money to match if they do in order to address the issue that we have from the, across the county?
I mean, there, there's a. There's gonna be a lot of money out there for broadband, whether it's matching or just straight grants. It is certainly an unknown. And speaking with some folks that are certainly more in the know at the federal level, we're ten years away at least on really solving the problem. It's an extreme expense to get broadband everywhere as far as the hardwiring and things. So, but it's an unknown whether, whether we're gonna have to match things or they're just gonna, gonna pay a hundred percent of it when they do things.
Yeah, I'd say that because I knew with our capital improvement, holding account, we have some particular, you might as well call it incumbent money, what we're gonna, what we want to use it for. And I was just thinking if it may be time to start looking at, at trying to put away some monies for any potential matching fund or small projects that may present themselves.
The great grants, are they typically matching or?
Not currently. And actually, this week is a big week with a lot of, of that we are, I'm actually participating in the seminar for Rockland County with the DIT department, which handles the great grants. And we're talking about the status of where we are and where we're going. And part of that is the Reesville Area Foundation and the PNA organization through COLM. And so there, we have formed a group with them in trying to come up with a plan for Rockland County. So when some funds come available, we have a better plan of where the needs are and what the uses could be. And we also are looking for local funding through some of the funds that are out there, such as Golden Leaf. So some of those may require matching funds from the counties if we're reaching out to those. But far as the state and federal thus far, there have been none that require matches.
Like I said, I just thought of that, thought it may be something we consider when we set the budget.
And you also, at some point in time, we'll have to, you all have to decide on how we spend the American Rescue Plan funds, but that broadband is an eligible expense in that. Of course, North Carolina, you can't, there's a, that's with the, but you can provide, potentially provide trans to providers of that. So that's, that's an option, I mean, it's a, so that's a main goal, and that's one route you can go with some of those funds.
With the transfer that's gonna be recommended at the June seventh meeting to move money from general fund to the capital reserve fund to, kind of sort of save money for the CIP that we'll go over. The CIP doesn't use all of the money that's gonna be the recommendation, so you will have some flexibility there with already designated money, not for broadband but for capital in that fund. You wouldn't have to take from the general fund balance, you could take from your capital reserve fund during the year if the board so chose.
As you saw with the last great grant, it's large expense, very little return as far as number of customers reached.
Yeah, so, so there's two great grants that Rockland County has received. The first one, which was near five hundred thousand dollars, and we have thirty-three houses that have received. Now, they are in the Bethany area and the Humphreys Ridge area actively planning out their project, which in that one, we're hoping about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty houses. But you're, it's a huge expense to get fiber to the home, especially in our rural areas. We are looking at some potential stopgap for wireless technology. But we have a beautiful countryside, it has lots of hills and hollers, so it doesn't work as well as it does down east.
I think there's a greater likelihood of, as far as what the governor's doing, funding that through the great grant as opposed to creating a different delivery method.
Anything else IT related?
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, page ten, it's Stoneville recommending that the Stoneville roof be replaced, it has a lot of leaks in it, it just needs to be replaced, it's currently our, our building. One, we're recommending one new ambulance and one rebound ambulance, as we do every year with the stretchers and the cardiac machines. We are recommending to purchase three Lucas devices. These, in my opinion, are very well, money well spent. These are basically machines that you put on a, a patient that provides constant compressions. These are basically machines that you put on a, a patient that provides constant compressions. And it's, it's a, it's a great system. I didn't know it existed until Kate showed me a while back, but they're very good for those who are going through stress. Sheriff's Office and Jail, we're recommending seven patrol cars and one detective vehicle. Recommended to replace the Axon body cameras and associated equipment. They replace the, the, these cameras about every two and a half years. Recommend replacing a jail transport van and recommend replacing the outdated jail timekeeping system. And public health, replacing Ford tours with the S U V. Basically with the rough terrain, the inclement weather, wherever to go out and get nurses to come in if we need to have them in. But these funds are coming from the, the public health escrow account. And social service, recommend replacing two Ford tours with a van and a Ford Escape. Of course, fifty percent of this will be reimbursed to us. And the bottom is capital proof plan. What's that? I'm sorry, I read.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine. I don't want to interrupt you, it's on the road. Wild path under.
I don't think, do you know the reason it's other than it's just a four-wheel drive and it's on state contract?
It's, yeah, it's four-wheel drive, it's on state contract and it seemed that price is not going to be too far in line with anything else that's four-wheel drive in that area in Frenesia Bay.
Pull the trailer?
And it can pull the public health trailer.
It can pull the public health trailer.
Okay, I mean, I just wondered why we didn't do Explorer or.
We can check locally. I mean, if, if they can beat state contract tremendously, I mean, we could look locally.
Nissan dealership, you know?
Yeah, we, we need to look locally first anyways.
Okay. The capital proof plan, again, my recommendation would be to designate five and a half cents to fund capital projects going forward for a continual funding stream. And I've asked Paul to kind of run down the C I P studies. He, he's been very, very involved with it.
So we can, as part of this year's budget process and adoption, we would ask that the board consider adopting the full capital improvement plan that we've gone over through the past. I'll just highlight real quick the projects that are in there for this year. But the capital improvement plan is a five-year plan that's revisited every year. So what's in there this year is a roof replacement for D S S. It's one of our oldest roofs. An animal shelter generator. Animal shelter is a twenty-four-seven operation during bad weather. When power goes out, they still have to be able to clean. They still have the lift station dedicated just to that animal shelter. Governmental center paving, parking lot, this would repave D S S and governmental center side. Governmental center roof, I can see from some of the ceiling tiles over there, we've had some leaks, so this will help take care of that. The mark, so replacing the H vac at the mark. That is included in here, the six hundred and twenty-five thousand, yes, sir?
Keep going, I will.
Okay. That's an item that we wanted to bring up for discussion with the board. I think everybody's aware that there's a significant H vac problem at the old jail where the mark is located, the old courthouse. The recommendation, I believe, but the recommendation from the manager would be that if, if we were to do this for this amount, that we make a contingent on turning the building and future facility improvements and repairs to the museum and archives.
And by the way, we're looking at every other outlet of funding that we can.
We, we talked about a couple of other options, have they been explored?
We, we applied for a grant. We would have quite a bit of skin in the game because it's, I think it's a dollar that they would fund every three dollars we fund, but still it's, it's more than, than nothing. I think it's two hundred them, four hundred us. But again, it's just a grant, you may or may not get it and it may not be. And we, we've talked with Wentworth, had some discussions with them. Anyway, we're looking at all of the avenues we can.
That's a lot of money.
It is.
I mean, that's, that's more than our budget for the whole economic development team down there. And my question is, is, is have we done an evaluation of the entire facility? To see if we're, make sure we're not throwing good money after bad? If that facility has other issues that are making anywhere a cost prohibitive, prohibitive to continue to try to make repairs down there? I mean, at this rate, I'm wondering why we built a new one if we keep maintaining the, the other one at that level?
We, we, we've got the facilities, we got a team, a team, the facilities committee, but a team that's actually there. And if you build a new one, this would be millions of dollars. It's going to cost millions just to tear down a whole.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what the, I know we, we also, we fund the mark with about fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand a year.
Fifty thousand a year. That was brought to my.
Plus other expenses.
Plus other expenses. But my, my question is, i- if we hired a, if we paid somebody to go through and do, do an inspection of that facility to make sure before we even consider dropping six hundred and fifty thousand dollars? And, and I still have some concerns about it even then, but to make sure that there's not other structural issues with that facility prior to us spending, spending that much money?
There, there are other issues. There are the plumbing, the roof. That's basis, I mean, the list is long, but distinct.
Is that more, more, more should be?
Yeah, I mean, they've indicated that that's where they want to be again. My recommendation would be if you spend that amount of money, you turn, and I told them, you turn the key over.
I thought that's what we did.
Me and Charlie talked about that.
Moved him into the jail.
I mean, me and Charlie talked about that. If we paid for this air conditioning, we'll just go ahead and kind of build, build over to them and whatever problems they got, they, they can, they can raise the funds.
How much is budget for the other problems? Because it's listed on the manager's budget that we got on Thursday on page fifty-five, mark repairs.
We don't have a set of the Mount Port, it just falls under general building maintenance.
What page?
That's what was emailed to you on Thursday. How many square feet in that facility?
Forty thousand feet, forty-four thousand feet.
Something like that. And that's just, that's not the jail side, that's just the courthouse side.
But, so how much did you say, Ronnie? I've got.
There, there, there's no set amount. We, it just falls under general building maintenance, like a lot of our buildings.
Well, what have we been spending on it?
I'm sorry.
It, it looks like it's eighty-five thousand that you put under general.
That's for every building.
Yeah, it's for every building.
So how much have you been spending on the mark?
A year, yes, sir.
It's probably five or six thousand. It's not a huge number, but it, it just depends on what happens there. Yeah, some, some years it's, some years it's not a thing. But that would be my guess.
Concern, I think, would be, we built a new facility because we knew that facility was old and had problems. And, and so now it's, as you said, how, how many other issues are still there? If you fix one, is it going to actually make that building usable for a significant period of time?
Is this what, your conversation with Mark? If we paid for the air conditioning, they'll take the building over? Well, we, we've, we've talked about that. We discussed that with them and.
Last meeting we had.
Yep. We've talked about options of possibly building a new building. And the question is, you know, for the kind of money that, that we're paying them now, what kind of building would that fund?
I mean, you're looking at, the, the knee, I mean, just the displays themselves, I mean, when they say, I wouldn't say forty thousand square feet, but it would definitely be more than twenty thousand. And when you build something like that, I mean, that's billions and billions of dollars that.
But we're giving them fifty thousand dollars a year, so that's a lot.
That'd go a long way for them.
Well, but to quote a dear friend of mine, probably just give them the keys to the Titanic.
That's smart friend.
I think what the, what the board could do if you chose to, this is the list of projects that are funded in the general fund. Meaning with approval of the budget, start July one, they can start now. You could designate money in the capital reserve fund that can't be spent without board action in the future. So the money's there, it's sitting over in the capital reserve fund pending whatever further studies that you'd like to do. Or you can just not fund it at all, leave that money in the capital reserve.
Sir, repeat what you just said. The, the money's in the capital improvement plan, but none of the monies would be spent for any project without it coming before us? Or would we have to designate?
So you have kind of two different ways of, of capital improvement plans. You have, what are you going to do this year? And then you have, what are you saving for, for the future?
Right.
So these are all the projects that would be done this year. In addition to these, there's two other projects, the radios and, and another one, I can't think.
We'll get into it.
Yeah, we'll get into it. That you're saving for, you're designating it in the capital reserve fund. So if you wanted to consider this item more, look into it more before you commit it to putting it in the annual budget, you can pull it out of here and designate it in the capital reserve fund. And we can't spend it out of the capital reserve fund without board action to move it back into the general fund where we can spend money.
Well, I can tell you, Mr. Chair, I'm not ready to spend six hundred and twenty-five thousand without a little more information.
Hang on one second. Go ahead. Pat, there are some, I guess, refinance avenues for governmental units that tie into new construction. I think, I know USDA does some of that. So do we have any debt on the books that would make sense to refinance if we could with new construction? I know we also started the process to refinance some debt that was just a straight refinance that's not tied into any sort of new project. Because fifty thousand dollars per year would go a long way towards paying a debt on an annual basis. Well, actually, probably about fifty-seven thousand. And if you also built something that included the library administration, then you'd be at about sixty-five thousand.
So we, we just had our financial advisors look at all of our debt and we refinanced the ones that made sense that, that generated a return to us and we closed on that September twenty-twenty. So right now, everything has been looked at and has very low rates. We do have the ability to, to finance new construction. We are anticipating going to the L G C for approval to issue debt to build the R C C workforce development center in the January timeframe. So if we're close enough to moving forward with something, we can do all that as a package and have two different, amortization schedules to different buildings. And I know we've talked about some school needs out there and that will probably come up at a later date if that moves forward. So we have some things that are sort of in our, in our timeline that we think are coming up for financing. We could do some things like that. But right now, our debt payments are as low as we have really good rates and everything.
I guess for that kind of money, what kind of a building could be built for, for that kind of payment?
I'd ask Commissioner Hall that question.
Well, what I haven't built to you, if, if you put a steel, but steel building up, you know, it's at least eighty dollars a square foot and that's just slab and steel.
That's, yeah, that's kind of.
And that's before you start adding stuff to make it serviceable.
Yeah, that's kind of gone by the wayside these days and metal building prices are going up like wood.
I'm not the most optimal time to do it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not the most optimal time.
I think I'm becoming a greater fan of tilt up.
Let me ask you this, is there any other facilities across the county that would accommodate?
We, we will, I mean, we don't, the county does not own anything that would accommodate that.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd be in favor of moving this particular line item over to a capital savings account and have staff further investigate the facility itself and what other options will be available for our consideration.
Yes, I, I agree. Do we want that as a formal motion?
No, we, we're good.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do that as a direct. I, I agree, I think we're all in agreement to that.
But then again, Mark probably needs a heating and air system. What are you going to do in the meantime while they're still down there?
Well, they're, well, they've been operating, well, they've been closed for a year.
And that's something else I'd really like to see. When they asked for this information, when we got this request from the board, did they ever provide any data as to how often that facility gets utilized? When you buy, whether it be school tours or just a general public?
They, they gave us something that's out of date because remember, they've been closed for over a year. So they, they have some older information that they provided to us. Did they give it to you, Paul or Lance? Did they give it?
I don't have that one requested yet.
Requested again and just send it to all of us?
And how does this impact our seniors that are used on the facility, this, this A P A C system?
And the high school seniors as well.
The robotics group and the senior citizens over there. It's all involved.
I understand there's, we're also using the, oh, jail for storage as well, I understand.
Yeah, that doesn't matter if we have the heating and cooling, that's just basic practice.
Just keep it dry.
Yep, so that we have EMS mobile data terminals, those are just basically your computers and air connections. This would put in the EMS units, same technology that's in the sheriff's office cars to allow them to be better dispatched to, to calls. That's eighty thousand dollars. Your voiceover I P phone system replacement, that's four hundred thousand dollars. That's basically to replace our entire phone system in the county. The existing one was bought in phases, the earliest phase, I believe, being in two thousand and six and that technology's just reached the end of life. Library self-service checkout system. That's a, that's a hundred and four thousand dollars and seventy-eight of them will be offset by an L S T A grant we receive it. And sheriff evidence building improvements, that's really a generator for the evidence building, sixty-five thousand to make sure that all the evidence is stored properly and in the event that we don't have the power.
Okay. To the library self-checkout system, what impact, what impact does that have?
That was one of them.
Sure.
That's certainly something that we will be investigating if this project is.
I think it has at Walmart.
Yeah.
It should, it should.
But, all right, well, that was one of my questions. The other one, as far as generators, we're making sure that we're not, I guess, buying generators in every department. Right, we're sharing generators as much as we can.
We tried, we looked at the one for the jail, it made common sense to have it looked up at the jail. For some reason, they didn't and it would not accommodate that. We don't, we, we don't have any generators over, over here. We probably should, but we don't. We have a generator to, to generate the I T when the power goes out. But we looked at tying in the, the generator with the jail and the courthouse, it just wouldn't accommodate it.
I guess my, my thing is, I think there was a couple of generators for different things in the budget and just making sure that we're sharing those between departments and not just having departments, you know, purchase generators because they need, because we can share those things across the department.
And these are, these are like permanent generators, there, there won't be ones that can be moved, but we do have.
We do have forty ones.
Part of emergency management, that's what, how we kind of lived along through the years. If the, if the animal shelter, if the power goes out, if emergency management has one, we'll bring it over there. Unfortunately, when power goes out, that's usually what's needed, very important places to. And that's what's recommended so far for next year, funding in the budget. So again, projects that will start July one approved. In addition, there's three projects recommended as SEB S I D in that capital reserve fund. It's basically just designated funds, but we don't start doing anything yet. First one's three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a county agency fiber radio replacement. Thank you all for that, with that project, the state is transitioning all the radio towers to a different technology. By twenty twenty-five, we have to be, all of our radios have to be compliant with that type of technology, they will not work.
I mean, Sheriff, you gotta, you gotta change all of your radios.
Yeah, they have.
That's what I call them.
And that also affects fire performance and stuff like that too, so it's. Yes, you, you're going to be getting calls from fire department, we'll help from them too.
We have that.
Bring that in.
And the radios, the radios are not cheap.
How much are, how much are the portables at a rate? We use the portables and motors.
Right.
Right, so we're talking.
Yes, yes. Yes, another bone, portables that are forty-five hundred dollars.
And I mean, a lot of it.
Now, it's a high dollar operation.
So with this, we'll be able to change all the sheriffs to EMS radios over?
Correct. If, if does not cover any of the voluntary.
No fire performance, no nothing? Are we looking at grant money to help the fire performance out?
I've looked into it, I've researched some of them, none of which have materialized as of yet, but we have looked into that. There's some grants out there.
I wonder if we can, tradition to state to tap into nine-one-one funds to help with that.
We tried, but again, we were talking earlier, those nine-one-one funds are practically held and it's, it's hard to get those released.
Don't know what to add. And we also, as the grants are available, we have tried to purchase and apply for a grant for purchasing. We're P twenty-five compliant as we get it. So we've been trying to get ahead of it, but when it comes to a four to six thousand dollars for a portable radio or mobile unit, they're the same. I mean, they're expensive.
Would you change radios if, if the state wasn't doing this?
I'm sorry.
Would you change radios?
Would you change if the state was changing their system?
No, change where generated good, we mandated bots, we would.
Would you do it for your own purposes, or is the only reason you're doing this because the state is mandated?
That's the main reason, I mean, radios need to be updated from time to time, and that's the information the state pushes out. You know, you've got old radios that need to be updated. The ones right now that we have, the Motorola XDL twenty-five hundreds and XDS twenty-five hundreds, the maintenance life span is over.
I accept all that, and actually, I understand that, I've had some experience in that line. The thing is, it ends up being a state mandated expenditure of money if you don't have a choice. And it's one of the things the Association of County Commissioners did set against. And if we've got this problem, other counties have got this problem.
Yeah. It's a significant obligation, absolutely.
The point of the problem is, they put the infrastructure in place, they, they just changed this thing from Murphy to Manio, and suddenly there's the bill of goods, and they've changed the rules on us a little bit. We use it as our primary communication, and then we're, by lack of a better word, we're subject to whatever rules they put in place. And however they want to change their infrastructure, we have to get the new toys to play on it.
And this is not the first time it's happened.
And it won't be the last.
Just out of curiosity, as we're making these changeovers, is this system backwardly compatible? If we've got some of the fleet that's not been updated, some has, will they be able to communicate with each other?
Again, until twenty-twenty-five, when they do the cut over date on twenty-twenty-five, anything that is not TPMA compliant will not operate on system.
So, my question, my question is, if we did this over a period of the next couple of years, we would be okay?
Yes, sir.
We're buying the compliant radios now. So, any radio that gets replaced, we're putting it on that technology that will work in twenty-twenty-five.
So, what you're telling me is, is this Viper replacement is not all the radios that we have?
No, not this, the total project cost will be about one point five million, this is only three hundred fifty thousand of that, and that's not including the fire.
I just want, right, I just want to be sure that as we replace these, the new radios, that we're not making those older radios where they can't talk to each other. And so, that's the reason I asked the question.
I have a question for you, Rodney, while you hear about, the sheriff, you may chime in on this too. What are we doing, or what are we doing now for a countywide backup? If we, if we for some unknown reason have Viper go down, and it was for an extended period of time? What are we, are we working on the low band, or we've got?
Low band is obviously going to be part of it. We still have the UHA, VHA system, but there are some agencies that, we've got eight hundred, the county went eight hundred, they chose to go away from those radios, so they don't have a backup plan. We have a system in place, but not all agencies can utilize this system because they don't have the old UHA, VHA radios. EMS can, Sheriff Walker can, fire departments can, from the sheriff, allow this mutual aid channel to be utilized as a fire backup as well. There are some agencies that do not have backup simply because they got rid of the old technology.
And we maintain those licenses, so we can still fall back on our analog system. When it goes down, like when you had that fire situation, it's, you know, we can flip over. But we do have ability to go back to the analog and maintaining those licenses. But Mr. K's helping us out there, we can still talk.
And I think that's one of the things that we did when I was still there, is we maintained the license, but there was still some, you know, there's expenses maintaining a whole infrastructure that you never gonna, you hope you never have to use. But you sit there for a lot of dollars in to, just to maintain it. So, yeah, I just, I appreciate you in the back of your mind having a solution for when that does happen, because it will occasionally happen.
And the Viper system is built with a lot of technology to guard against that. They're microwave, they're microwaved to each other, they have backup generator on every tower. So, it would take a big event to drop the whole Viper system, but again, you need to be ready just in case it happens.
Thank you, gentlemen.
The next set aside is tax replacement software. The current software system actually has no problems right now, it's just the age of it that gives us pause. It's been used since nineteen ninety-six, ninety-seven, and the total cost to replace it is about a million dollars. So, we know at some point we're gonna have to replace that system. And so, we wanted to start to set aside money every year so it doesn't creep up on us. And the final one is the future public facility projects. This has been a hundred thousand dollar annual set aside, I think, for the last three years. And really, it's a, it's a way to gather money for facilities needs that we don't really know that we have yet, that despite our best planning might creep up on us. And it's something the board can use, however it sees fit as well. Any of these projects, you can change, move money between the projects.
Are you envisioning that also being the infrastructure expansion stuff, or is that somewhere else?
That, that's the one that we originally created a couple of years back. The landfill's fund, significant capitals, is a silo for the posi shell. Posi shell is gonna be a new way we do cover. Right now, daily recovery of our six inches of dirt. The posi shell's a quarter inch cover, it will spray on, almost like the little chocolate you put on ice cream, it freezes over on top of it, and it hardens, it's gonna do the same thing. It will save almost nine years of life for the landfill, so to me, it was really much a no-brainer to go that route. Replace an existing two thousand and eight water truck that has mechanical problems, and the tank and the pump are both messed up. The cost of that new truck is a hundred fifteen thousand dollars. We are recommending the creation of a landfill capital reserve fund to allow needed funds to accrue over a period of time. The two projects, one will have to replace, eventually replace a bulldozer that, what we recommend replacing in twenty-twenty-four, and we recommend putting two thousand, two hundred thousand away, but the purchase of this is a total of six hundred forty thousand. And the other is to put away six hundred fifty thousand dollars per year for the construction of cell five, which the total cost of that is estimated three point three million dollars. This project already has one point four million dollars set aside for it.
So, all this is, as far as the consultant, I know we ended up heavy in toys, you know, having to reassess our equipment. But all this is.
Complained.
Yeah, this is what I, yeah.
Because we've ended up with a recommendation to increase the fees because the board didn't know, not this board, but the solid waste board didn't really know how to operate.
It will be operating a lot more efficiently.
Okay.
And we're actually, yeah, we're, yeah, we'll be back with you guys in the future with some options. New funds created for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, as I mentioned, we're recommending that you all develop a landfill capital reserve fund, set aside funding for future projects. There are five that we have to create to comply with GASP statement eighty-four, fiduciary activities, and the LGC guidance on proper classifications. And you'll see down at the very bottom that it's the DSS, represented pay accounts, registered deeds, fine forfeitures, the Vera Holland Center and airport grant funds. If you have any more questions on that, ask that person, she may be able to explain that, but.
The Vera Holland stuff was separately full, or are you just re-categorizing, or?
Right, so it had originally been set up as a fiduciary fund, and after evaluating it, it really doesn't qualify for fiduciary, it really needs to be special, so we moved it, its classification.
That's just more of a technicality.
All of those are technicalities, really.
We have two separate funds, one Vera Holland for the library, St. Library, and one Vera Holland for the Vera Holland Center.
Right, that trust where those funds come from, we're very specific on what percentage of those distributions go to which, whether it's the Vera Holland Community Center or whether it's for stolen programs. So, we have to keep that separated, separated due to that trust.
On page thirteen, as you all are aware, we're gonna try a new program with the litter program. We will be offering the community an opportunity to pick up miles. We've recommended seventy-five dollars a mile. We budgeted fifty thousand dollars for the program, so this will allow up to six hundred and seventy miles of roadway annually. We've already had several people request to be put, their groups to be put on the list.
We've had several nonprofits not feeing, right?
Well, nonprofit slash individual folks, groups. We'll say the commissioners, I mean, five individuals. I mean, it's not necessarily nonprofits. Correct, Ronnie?
That's correct. Like civic groups or something.
Or just, just anybody, I mean, if they do the job, if there's five guys that want to get beer money for the weekend, they pick up the trash, and we approve, they've done the job, then, I mean, it's.
Sounds like we're funding the sheriff some work.
You weigh them? That's one way to look at it. The, I'm sorry. Okay, contingency, there's two hundred fifty thousand in it, we've had that in there several years. We don't, we try not to use that, but it's there, it's good to have there in case we do come up with some issues that come up during the year. In education, the public schools request a double increase in current expense allocation and an eight hundred and forty-four percent increase in capital outlay. I'm recommending that both the current expense allocation and the capital outlay remain the same as the current year. They do have restricted sales tax funding. We project this, this fund will have one point eight million dollars at the end of the year. We'll add another two point three this upcoming year, which will be a total of four point one million dollars available for them. So, that would be a good chunk and change for them to be able to use for capital projects.
Have you heard anything from the school board about any projects that they have that they want to place this money in, come to call?
I have not yet, have you?
I know they've talked about some needs. I have already gotten our financial advisor to go ahead and update the affordability, financial affordability study based on these numbers that we have here. So, we're ready on our side to show how much they can afford with this money and debt going forward. So, when the schools have their plan ready to come in and request, we'll know what we can fit in there.
Thank you, that's exactly where I was going.
Yes.
And they've got a large sum of money coming from the federal government that.
Much larger than us.
Yeah. They're wanting a little bit of joint communication to just make sure everybody's on the same page in terms of expenditure.
Yeah, I know the liaison and the chair have suggested that we possibly look at a joint meeting, they'd go over some of these things. And I'd suggest it maybe after the budget's adopted, we'll look into that, look at their capital needs. So, we make coordinate a joint meeting.
Do you want me to, you guys want to pull that together?
I mean, we're probably looking, I don't know, do they have guidance yet?
That's just kind of what we've been waiting for.
Yeah, as far as what they can spend it on and what can't spend it on.
I'll get Rodney to find out.
We've started these meetings over and over again, you know, if we would continue with general purpose representatives from their board and our board.
Yeah, I think that's the idea initially was for Charlie and I to get together with their liaison and chair and sit down and have some discussion and figure out whether we need both boards together or.
So, you got, okay, good.
Yeah, well, yeah, let's do that first, we'll handle that first.
Okay, taking that off. RCC has requested an eight point six percent increase in operations and a thirty-three percent increase in capital outlay. I'd recommend the current expense allocation and capital outlay remain minus the debt service and the capital outlay. The reason I say that is because RCC included the debt service payment for the science lab in the capital aid request, and we already have that accounted for in our debt service. Page fourteen, no, we have the fire tax districts, no fire, no fire districts requesting an increase. That is the end of the summary, and we'll just go briefly, if you don't mind, to the tabs. Tab two is a brief overview of the budget, the six items.
Let's, let's talk about a two minute recess. All righty, back in session, Mr. Manager.
Yes, sir. I was gonna go through the tabs, again, the meeting with the guests is going eleven on, to talk about each individual. Budget, we have, tab two is the brief overview of the budget, the biggest item in the revenues is the loss of the forty foster care funds from the state, that's about a hundred and seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Tab three is a capital outlay request, the request is seven million dollars. We're recommending a consideration of four million, and I've asked Paul to kind of briefly go over those.
So, I don't know if the board has any questions about anything specific on the capital sheets. The main things, we've already kind of talked about, the ambulances under EMS, medical devices. I'm trying to come up with ideas for you. A lot of what's in engineering and public utilities is the, what's in the capital improvement plan. So, your roof, your paving, that sort of thing. IT, we've already discussed, with the fund system upgrade as well as the infrastructure stabilization.
The Mark HVAC is gonna move out.
Yes, correct, that Mark HVAC that shows up there will be moved out. Jail, we've discussed.
Question, a lot of these departments, you know, they have computers and other IT-type stuff in them. Is this coordinated through our IT department as well? I mean, everybody's not doing their own thing, right?
It is the only time that you would have somebody buying their own computers is if they have a specific revenue source that lets them pay for it instead of us. Yeah, every purchase.
But they still coordinate that purchase too?
Yeah, I think we've covered just about all the high-level capital that's in the entire budget, other than.
Do you guys have any questions on tab three? Okay.
Page, tab four is just the ten-year term of position history that we try to show you all every year. Tab five are, these are the recommended vehicle replacements that I mentioned in the budget in the summary. Six is just your position mission statement for teaching focus.
We've got some additional information coming on the vehicle stuff.
We did, you did.
Absolutely.
Seven is the fire tax districts for the, for all the fire taxes, again, they're requesting increase. Eight are the fees, I asked Paul to kind of hit the highlights for you.
The first one is off-duty officer fee, that's just increasing that five dollars, that's the amount paid to officers for working off-duty. Just to stay competitive with surrounding jurisdictions, I've been this kind of several years. Planning is actually two fee reductions from what's in the fee schedule. I'm not, my understanding from speaking with the plan director was, these amounts were what they had been charging, the five hundred dollars less, and they felt that was a fair amount, even though the pieces that were required. So, this is to reflect that based on what our consulting costs are. Need services has one increase to an existing fee that's small for a hook, but then also, this is the first year they're gonna start charging fees for services that they provide. Things like assessments and screening, yeah, counseling, that kind of thing. Yes, sir.
Are any of these services that they're providing available in the private sector, locally? Or in the private sector, start there? Are we competing with the private sector with any of these services that we're now trying to be charged for?
I imagine you think so as far as the.
I was gonna say, it's a choice, because folks that need those particular services can go ahead, and if they want to go to youth services, they can choose to go to youth services, or they can go to other providers.
And that's what I'm asking you, are we, is the county competing with other providers, private providers with these particular services?
Is that first, I mean, essentially, possibly, yes. I'm trying to understand.
Oh, it's a simple question. I don't know if I can make it any more simple, but are we competing with anyone in the private sector when we provide these services in the community?
From the bottom line, yes, I guess you could say that would be. Because if I'm a person that needs to go for that service, and I'm looking at these providers and youth services is in that provider array, then yes, that would be though.
So, I think what he's driving at is, why would the government compete with a private company for those services? And that's his question, is are we competing? In other words, are we providing a service that a private company locally is providing? So, we ultimately are competing with that private company?
But we're not, we're not providing all of those services that other companies are doing. So, for example, intensive income, we don't do that in the services. So, we focus more on JCPC programs and then services specifically under the social services paradigm, such as trauma and form services.
Well, I know a little bit about it, having been involved over youth services for a while, and I know, I've heard judges specifically saying, you need parent counseling, contact youth services to set it up. So, I don't know if that's, Felicia, I don't know if that's competition or not. If the judge could have said, go get it somewhere. Because if the judge said, go get it. Because if the judge said, go get it somewhere, now we're competing with it, if they say.
And that's, that's my question is, is that are any of the services that, that we provide through youth services that we're funding from the county or from the state? Are any of those services competing with anybody in the private sector? Not that all of them do. You know, obviously there's some services that we provide that's not provided to the private sector. I'm just asking, is any of the ones that we do provide currently available to be provided by someone in the private sector?
There are a few.
That's all I got to write down.
I guess my other question is if, if they are, are these market rates for these items or are we undercutting?
Or we're just picking a number out of a hat?
Yeah.
Well, and I guess I'm getting back to, I mean, uh, Mr. Chairman, is that, you know, we sit and look at the, the, the services of the of, uh, other, in other areas, but that, that where we rely on the private sector to provide that service and we don't. I think we used the term non-compete. And if we're doing it in, we just, I just think we need to be really, really careful. We need to be really, really careful that we're not competing with somebody that opens up a, you know, goes to school and comes back or whatever and provides this particular service to our youth or anybody else. And we compete with them from county level costs. That's, that's, that's not really.
What Tara has done this year is that she has really started to look at that and is starting to push those services more into the areas that need to be done and not necessarily the ones that are being provided by private providers in the area.
I just, I just hope that we, we continue to move in that direction because we've had that conversation about the rate at which we're funding and the rate at which like sized communities are funding. And we still have a lot of work to do. I mean, it's just, there's other, not that that's not a need. I just want to make sure that, that we're filling the gaps and we're not going out of our, not driving in our lane. We're driving in somebody else's lane.
So I'll give you an example, Triple P. That is an evidence-based program. They are, receive the training in that. That is going to be something that is part of that Family First Services Prevention Act that DSS has to go to. No one else in the county provides that. That's one of the things that she's got her training in. So that's the focus that we've been doing the past year.
And I'm a hundred percent behind it. I just want to make sure, where I've been in the struggle with there is a, a competing program or a service that's outside, uh, that's available in the private sector, that the public sector is, is providing and competing with the private sector. That's all I got at this point. But I applaud you for looking at revenue sources. Thank you very much because if there is an opportunity to recover from either the private sector, private insurance, or through, uh, through, well, private pay or, and there may be some Medicaid monies that may help this, and we are, and we are at least trying to recover some of our expenses by being revenue producing.
I was gonna say that once we get to youth services page, you'll just see, uh, their county share and general fund contributions down significantly because of those positions that they actually eliminated.
Yeah, I've seen that. I've seen it, but I also want to make sure to, that's great if we are now charging. I just want to make sure that we're not charging, we're not competing with those in the private sector that provide the same services.
Are we providing any services that are being underutilized? We're paying for someone to be here and we're just not getting foot traffic. And that goes beyond DSS. I mean, that.
Now, Tara did a very careful analysis of what her services are. Um, and things that she's, was doing, some of those have shifted and have been pushed together. So there's a little better efficiency in what she's doing. And that, that's kind of what Paul was talking about. When you get to that page, you can see what she's done with that.
But we're still, our local match is still significantly higher than like sized communities.
Yes, correct.
But is the recidivism rate for juveniles lower?
Well, that was gonna be my question because, uh, Commissioner Pearl brought that up to me before. And I couldn't do an answer because we may be getting very good value for money. Maybe we need to be spending that much. His question, of course, is are we wasting money? Are we not getting money that money's worth?
I'm not, I'm just saying is this money just gonna be utilized in other? Is some of the gaps that we're filling not being funded is deeply as they should because we're such as a broad sweep instead of a narrow sweep. I, that's, that's my concern. Uh, but also, you know, at, at the level which we're funding is significantly higher.
Well, keep looking.
There's no question that it's higher. The, the per capita cost is higher. We saw that comparison. Question is, what do we get with the money?
And I think some of the data, and I, I still question some of the, the data is hard to interpret because of the carryover. You know, I've talked to you about the carryover. And that's, that's, you know, at the end of the day, when we sit and talk about with month, I'd like to know how many souls we helped in twelve months, you know what I'm saying? Because I don't know that we're getting that because of the carryover data from month to month, and you know exactly what I'm talking about. That's all I have, Rodney.
At youth services, we have a couple of small fee changes in public health. Two of them regarding Medicaid transformation, two of them around the dental clinic, uh, based on, uh, expenses. Environmental health, the benchmarking that's current year of fees that they provide, uh, assets that came back compared to thirteen counties that came back. Several, mostly my fee adjustments, some more significant, um, to put it in alignment with what other counties are charging for these services. And finally, landfill, uh, as we talked about, has kind of two categories of tip, of fee. One is the tipping fee. So every tip fee that was thirty-six dollars per ton is now thirty-seven dollars per ton. Uh, and then also tires, as we've kind of talked about the last few years, the cost for tires recycling is going up, and so this is to match our, to get closer to our, our contract with our vendor that we have to provide, send these tires to. Any questions on that?
All right.
Excuse me, that's not gonna be a surprise.
I've, I've talked to them. I've, I've, we had a management meeting, I've spoken to them. I'll, once it's all said and done, if after today goes well, then I'm confirming with the cities and towns.
Eden wrote that in my budget message.
Yeah. Nine is your budget calendar. Ten is the budget ordinance, which has to have two things modified. Can't do more than those.
Yeah, just small modifications. One, the first is, it's still in here, says it's four seven seven cents going to the capital improvement plan. If, uh, if after today the board feels comfortable with the five and a half cents, as we've discussed a few times, then that'll be updated to five and a half cents going to capital, for the capital improvement plan. The other is one that came up just recently, um, in discussions with the county attorney and if he's in here or not. On page, what would be page thirty-seven at the bottom. So it's the second to last page of the budget ordinance. Under section six and under, uh, item D. It says, the manager has the authority to execute contracts as the lessor or lessor of buildings, land, equipment, vehicles, or other property provide such losses and one year duration of less than budget appropriations. What, how, how this came up was we're looking at possibly leasing a dishwasher in the jail because it's cheaper than actually buying one, uh, if, Mr. Attorney. And, uh, the, the question to the board was, is that something that you want to just have, have the manager be able to handle, even if those small leases are over twelve months, or is that something that the board would want to approve? Because I think the lease was.
Three years.
Three years and like, I can't remember how many thousands. Do you remember Shane, how much it was here?
For the.
Dishwasher lease here.
Uh, one eight nine one.
So you're talking.
And that, that includes all the chemicals, everything uses, uh, if you purchase the dishwasher, the chemicals and everything is gonna cost you right at three.
You're talking just these small leases that might be part of normal, uh, business? So the recommendation could, would be to just remove, um, equipment out of that list of things there. And that then would give the manager the authority to execute those contracts under the last item to approve and execute documents of a routine, uh, nature incident to the work.
What number are you on?
Six six.
D.
Believe my concern from a legal perspective, you don't want, you don't want minor equipment, everyday routine contracts to be held up in the process, uh, for what you require in court approval. Plus, you wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to load up the, the board, uh, the board's agenda, you know, but, but this.
So you just want to eliminate the word equipment.
Like I said, under section six, number D. Or I guess, John, we could also just put a dollar limit on there.
I agree.
See, that's, that was my favorite. I mean, currently that dollar limit's fifty thousand dollars, right? On, on other things.
On transfers, yes.
Is there a dollar limit on contracts right now as far as our local operating procedures?
Not, no, not that I'm aware of. The, the, um, it's not a set of contracts, but the service agreements, uh, that's the bullet right before that. The manager has the authority to enter into those service agreements so long as the money is budgeted. This is different in that it, it crosses years. I think that's why I was in there originally, is not to do things that cross years and basically sign the board up for things, uh, without the board knowing about it, but these small incidental things, the board can choose to give that flexibility to the manager so long as the total term of the lease didn't exceed some dollar amount.
I mean, I, I think from a transparency standpoint and just so that you don't end up with contracts that just all of a sudden pop up as far as budget issues. I would think a dollar amount would be something that we look at, whether it's a total dollar amount consistent with what we got as far as the fifty thousand dollars or some other amount.
Fifty thousand dollars over the life of the contract?
Yes. Yeah, I'm thinking life of the contract, not per year.
I mean, I would.
That covers many, I mean, that's.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, might exceed fifty thousand dollars over the life of the contract.
Or, or if you want to say if the, if the lease payments were under twenty thousand or twenty-four thousand per year. Per, per year and, and up to a three or five year contract. I mean, but that would cover both of yours.
Yeah. I would. Life of the contract, keep it clean.
Yeah, life of the contract would keep it clean. You're right. Just two fifty thousand life of contract.
We can work with the attorney and come up with the language just for that, send it out to the board, protect your company.
I think that's the thing to do.
That way we don't end up with a twenty year contract that all of a sudden some future board and some future manager finds out about.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I like the total dollar amount.
We'll save that, yeah. All right, you guys want to move to and eleven, again, that's when we start going through each department. So you can handle this however you want to. Start off with Governor Body.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say on the county play plan. It would be easier for me to read if it was broken down by grades versus. When I sit down and look at a county play plan, when I look for a job, if I don't know what grade it's in, hard to find it more if I don't know how it's gonna be.
Do that. That's, oh, yeah, yeah, so we've had it in both. We've had it by grade order and then we've had it by alphabetical for job path.
But the other thing, what does the red stand for?
The red are things that are either newly added to the pay plan.
There was just no key. So that's why. Some red, some black, so.
The, the red, Renee, as part of what she was doing this year was examining. Actually, she's done, she's done an audit, she's done an audit of a lot of, uh, HR type stuff this year. One of these is this, these are jobs that we actually already have and have had for whatever reason they haven't been on the pay plan. Not new jobs or being hired or anything like that. So it just puts them on there. I think a lot of it, when I looked at it, was just terminology, like community paramedic. Those are jobs, previously they were under paramedic. So it's just clarification, um, things like that. But I had to keep them from here on out. And we'll get you the, the pay plan by grade.
All right, uh, Governor Body. Same there. County Manager. Public Information Officer.
I don't know where some of these things fall because of getting that line item information Thursday, so I don't know where some of them fall because we really wouldn't put together with these summaries. So as far, I'm, I'm assuming public information officer would include the peg channel?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. For some reason, I'm thinking that when we started that, we were told some of that money would be self-sufficient or self-funding at some point in time in the future. Does that ring a bell? Or we'd be getting money from somewhere?
We get twenty-eight thousand from the state to cover expenses, and we're also getting, I think, Regals. Well, they've applied for it.
They've applied for it. I think that's still in the process of coming up with terms that they're comfortable with.
Well, and it, what about Dylan and Disbalance?
They, they didn't apply.
I think Regal's the only one that applied so far that I'm aware of for the funding.
But we're, we're broadcasting the, the meetings, right?
Right. It's, it's up to those individuals that used to have, to apply for the funding that they would get every year. And what we're trying to come up with, uh, the COVID delay to zone, uh, is a contract that they're comfortable with because they're, they're gonna give us the money that they get, twenty-six or so thousand dollars. Uh, I'm sure it's gonna come with terms about how much of their content's gonna be on the channel. When is it gonna be on the channel?
It just seems like to me if they don't apply for it, we leave the money laid on the table to help offset the expenses which we are carrying.
So how do we incentivize them to do that?
Think we don't broadcast unless they apply.
Well, and, and, and the, the, Stonewall Madison made him, they don't particularly care about having theirs, they currently broadcast. Wentworth, Regal, and Eaton do. For some reason, I can't remember why Eaton did not think, I think there was some issues at the time that we, they didn't have the, the manager there. Wentworth, I can't remember why they did. But anyway, well, the revenue that we get right now fully covers the cost of the pay account.
That's.
Just us, our own.
It gets a little bit more complicated to bring in more revenue and then the expectations from the cities. Right now, we run twelve hours a day and you run twelve hours a day and then it's duplicated, so we run even more time. It, it eventually gets to a position where we have to look at possibly hiring somebody, which we do, having that money to manage that a little bit better. Because right now, we're just using existing, uh, IT staff to program it pretty simply. But that, that's a big thing we gotta get into this next little bit.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna expand the, the local transparency and the community channel. I think it's a good thing, especially if we can get the, the funds to do it as eligible expense by Regal and Eaton participating. And having some, and having somebody that, one, helps expand that, uh, the programming and the types of program about.
And we did currently show there on, I like to say, all of them on, on TV. All the board meetings and everything, everywhere. You can't commit to that.
We've, we've offered it to the, to all of them. You think that they will be all about transparency too?
Safety and risk, that's. Finance. You guys want to do it? I mean, is this, uh, fine to do it this way?
Yeah, you want to ask questions on the lines.
Tax. Legal.
Backing up to tax, does any, does this include the additional monies that look to be set aside?
No, so if you look at the second page under tax, page fifty-two, that's your revow budget. This year, we have been putting money towards that every year, and we will continue doing that after this, but since the board is looking at possibly going ahead and funding a revow this year out of fund balance, uh, there's no money in here. It'd be outside of the budget. If it's approved. If it's not approved, then you absolutely need to go back to sticking money here.
And he, he, he does have the quotes in on the revow. He, he got a very set on that.
And just, I did check and the state's not hearing from other locales as far as increase in sales price being an issue. It's not that prices aren't going up, it's. It's not that prices aren't going up, it's, some of it is, they're on a regular four-year cycle as opposed to eight-year cycle, so.
I understand some of it as being that we've seen such an increase in ours, you know, compared to some of the other tier-one counties, so to speak.
But they're not hearing it as, as an issue.
You're right, it could be because of the four-year. And whenever they did their last one, twenty nineteen, right before it started really growing. Legal?
There's a question, Troy, there, but we talking about a contract attorney or part-time attorney to help out our situation?
Yeah, we, we've included, and we've talked with council about it, we've included additional funding in his budget for outside counsel for board elections, because we, you know, this past year has been very high considering for, for John.
Close is a conflict.
Yeah, so we included that in the budget.
Would that be in his or in the board of elections?
It's in his right now. We can move it over to the board of elections if that's what you would.
I'd rather see it under there.
That would give us oversight to choose who.
They are an independent entity, not affiliated with the county, other than.
Funny.
Yeah, I mean, they need their own website, they need, it's completely independent.
Okay, so we'll move it from, okay, that place.
Just a whole talk, Kevin, I'm just talking about there. If it's under our legal, it's under approved.
No.
You don't, you're saying you don't want it at all?
It's not under.
That means we, it determined we do all of that.
I don't want to pick the term, that's, they got a governing body that provides oversight, and that's just to see, hire their employees.
Sounds good, Lee.
One thing that needs to be conveyed to them, though, is that, that they need to figure out when the attorney needs to be there because costs go up quite a bit, they can't.
We give them money, we're not giving them more, they go broke, they go broke.
Yes, sir. Speaking of elections, that's the next management.
So you want to add the collater, contractor attorney to this budget here, right?
Yes.
How much?
Let me put ten thousand in there.
Ten thousand for contract attorney?
Yes.
I mean, I'm.
Is that reasonable?
That's, that's up to us. And that is a guess.
Depends on what they do.
That's what I was going to say.
Well, yeah, but you, you can narrow it down, you know, you know what the retaining rate is, and you know what the per-hour rate is, and how many meetings.
They have call meetings, they have all.
Here's what we need.
Well, you know it.
How many of call meetings they have left?
Last year was another, I think, I don't know.
Here's what we need to do, we need to give them a lump sum. They spend it on what they want to spend it on. When they go broke, they go broke. If they got money left over, then they got money left over.
So then it suggests that it's a ten thousand, that's theirs.
I'm talking about the total dollar.
That's what I'm talking about, yeah.
I'm talking about four hundred.
Four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, beat.
And we're done with it.
Okay.
I mean, and.
Yeah, I understand exactly what you're saying.
Okay, now, the question is, as far as that total amount, they've been with two employees for a long time. They, they presented a budget with three. So do they need four forty-two, or do they need four hundred?
I can't answer that.
Well, their board will make their recommendation on their budget, so they just have to make their recommendation.
Are they right behind you? Two of them.
You got your new director there.
Chairman's the new director.
Pauline?
Yeah.
Come on up.
Because we, we need staff to understand, they are independent, they're not affiliated, other than Rockham County and their name and us funding.
Well, the, the only.
And payroll.
Yeah, I was going to say, the only place that gets muddy is that we still do their payroll, we still do purchasing, we have to follow all those relevant laws, and so that's, and that's the only, it's really not trying to get into their business as much as just follow the laws that we're supposed to follow.
As far as policy, their procedures.
Yeah, that.
We don't want to receive them in any way, shape, form, or fashion.
Unless we're required to by law.
They need their own insurance.
We don't call them, because they're a county department as far as their budget goes.
Grounded by the state.
They do have to follow the finance procedures, policies, procedures as far as purchasing. If they go over budget, I, we are hell-awful for that. We would be the, the county would be the one that is, gets the compliance, being in our audit because we let the, the department go over budget. So I do have the financial level of control over making sure that money is spent properly in accordance with laws, state laws and county policy, and that they do not go over budget. So I do have that, that I have to be concerned about.
Gotcha.
So, so the, I guess the question for, for the director then is, do, do they need the three, do they need the four forty-two, or is the four thirty-two sufficient for the county attorney?
Where do you, where do your figures come from?
Well, that's what I was going to say, they have got a governing body, they've got a body focused on this budget. Question is, did their governing body vote with this budget?
Yes.
They did, okay, because I know we got to some things before with the prior director, and that prior director, I think board director was.
Board chair.
Board chair, yeah, he was operating without anybody else knowing what was going on, so.
The board chairs here, my understanding is, board did vote on their budget that they submitted to us. There are some, some of the lines had justification, some didn't, but I worked closely with them just to get, because that was my big thing, was making sure it had been approved by their board, and I think that was.
So pretty much the only thing we want to do is add the ten thousand legal expense to their budget.
So, well, but if they requested four twenty-five, who told them that they should get four thirty-two?
The only thing that we modified at all was, they requested the FICA, so it's the tax based on that, only on their permanent staff. So they have other things that need FICA, and as part of our going through and looking at benefits and whether everything lines up, we did go ahead and add in the FICA that should have been there for that. That's the only change that we made, for their, like, temporary salaries and things like that.
But I'm hearing from Pat, we may not be able to give just a lump sum and say, y'all are on your own, because of what her requirements are.
That's correct.
And I team brought up something too as well.
But you can say lump sum of ten thousand dollars just for attorney fees. Yeah, I mean, you, you can, you can say that, you just can't say salary and stuff like that.
Well, you can, it's just that whatever the budget stopped at, when it gets to finance, it still will have to be a line item budget based on how they need it.
They have to do budget commitments to move like twenty-five.
Right.
You can stipulate.
And my question is.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, in the budget is almost sixteen thousand dollars for capitalized capital. What do we buy?
Is that the, where are you at now? That's not the.
Where are you at?
Is, what, what bond is that under, is that under?
Under four one five seventy fifteen.
Is that amended?
Well, it's a twenty twenty-one request, it's not recommended, I'm just wondering what the request was, what were we supposed, what did they want to buy?
About the camera system?
Oh. What was my question?
He's on the, did line item.
I'm on the line item, by the way, Lance, I'm just, I like the line item much better than what you provided us.
Hey, that's, if we need details, you guys want to get it.
Well, just, well, it gives me some, I like, that's like.
Mr. Manager, I'd, I'd like to hear from the chair of the board elections regarding the attorney's amount that we're looking at, is that reasonable?
So the chair can't tell you very much about.
She needs to come up here, I can't hear you. Come up here, come on.
The chair can't tell you very much about the attorney's presence, simply because the chair did not, was not here during the time that we spent so much time at the meetings. Now, as far as I'm concerned, if you're getting ready to separate the attorney from what he's done in the past, then I say, I would like to ask you, just as Commissioner Travis said, that you set aside the amount of money that we want to eat. So if you're saying ten thousand dollars, if you want to set that aside, then I think that needs to be done.
And, go ahead. And the board of elections has been with two employees as opposed to three for a period of time, I mean, a lengthy period of time, and has functioned with just two. So trying to figure out why there's a budget for three.
Well, you know what? They're barely functioning with two. And the reason they are functioning with two is because of what has happened in the pa, what happened in the past to, for them to end up with two. So what I'm telling you is, our director has plenty of work to do, our deputy director has plenty of work to do, and then there's the senior deputy director that will also have plenty of work to do. Their job responsibilities are different, so that's one of the reasons we're asking for three.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I got a call last night from a commissioner from a different, a different county, and he was asking me about a grant that's available, wanted to know if I knew anything about it, and I told him that it was having our budget here today, for a, a disabled voter machine or something like that. He said that they were talking about it in the neighboring county, and there was supposed to be some type of grant. He really wasn't sure how it operated, I really wasn't either, because I think the board elections does a great job, when you come up there and you have mobility issues, you pull up and somebody comes out there and greets you and gets your information, goes inside and brings you back the appropriate ballot. I just wondered if, and that's why I asked, was that something that, when I asked that particular capital item that was not included in the budget, I just wondered if that was in, nothing. Okay, that's, that's all, that was my, my question, because I said, I don't.
It would be good if we knew more information about it, so that we could look at whether.
Like I said, I, this was a phone call last night, and I, I said, well, I don't know, we just have to have a meeting tomorrow, I'll ask if they got any in the budget.
Commissioner Travis, you have a question?
Madam Chair, I just want to say, I appreciate you coming here today and Pauline, and I devil Pauline a little bit, and she's been excellent, I think y'all made a good hire. But, so let me make sure I'm right, you're in agreement that y'all passed this budget, and if we need to add legal to your budget, you're, you're like the lump sum figure instead of something else?
Well, I'm, I'm saying that, what, I need to refer that to our director. How, how do you feel about that? Of course, you know, we don't make decisions on our own, the two of us don't make decisions on our own.
That's so comforting to hear. I said it's comforting to hear because your predecessor did.
I'm not here to talk about my predecessor.
Right.
I'm not even going to start.
Sorry.
So I'm just telling you that we operate, or should operate with the five members.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, you're asking us questions that we've not taken back to our board, so I'm just saying, we should be having that conversation with the board.
So we can, probably adding the lump sum to legal now, and then you take it back to board and see if that's, if that's for y'all.
I think that'd be bad. How about you break out legal and just one lump sum legal, ten thousand, I mean, there's no way.
Just another long, long contract. Professional services.
That would be, that would be, with the explanation that that is board's legal services.
No, we're going to put that in the.
I'd be surprised if it worked, she came up with that figure from the previous page, we just transferred it to this page. So I would think it needs a little more scrutiny than it looks like this, unless you want to give us some advice that I would be happy to accept.
I think we'll go, I think we'll go with that, man, I've got, I think, I think it's a reasonable amount. Oh, for the public watching, this is Paula Seemster, she is the new director at the board of elections this year.
Thanks for coming, I can.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pardo, your question about the nineteen thousand dollars that was in capital, those are the hubble funds that's going to be used for, I believe, security system, that were approved during the year, they weren't, they're not requested for next year.
All right.
Do we have any other questions?
No.
For these five? Thank you, ladies.
So is that what this board wants to do, is just go ahead and put a lump sum with their budget? Or you are?
Just put, yeah, just put that under.
Talk back to legal.
Yeah, just legal, yeah.
And professional services in there.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Your questions are still outstanding.
A little bit, yeah.
All about the position.
Yeah. We'll just have to get some information from.
The weird dream that we want to give them a lump, and they.
Right.
Yeah, there you go, if you want more, let us know.
Well, Pat said there's some limitations on that, so.
Oh, I understand that.
Yeah.
It's got to be dispersed according to all of them.
All right, registered deeds, and then behind Ben's is the registered deeds automation and preservation.
I will say this, on his line item budget, he might ought to teach a class.
It was pretty good, it was pretty good.
I mean.
It was real good, you have to give Ben some props.
He explained every detail, of course, Ben's just detail-oriented, but much more detailed than other departments.
It was real good. It's very functional on a day-to-day basis.
IT. Engineering and Public Utilities.
General question, may not have the ability to answer this, but doing a lot of building, maintenance, building, construction, my material costs are just going through the roof, are, are we close with what's being proposed here?
As close as we were when we made the estimates early on, I, I don't know now about it.
Well, that's fine, but I suspect that, I mean, she implied the words four, four times what it was six months ago.
Go ahead. Ronnie, for the capital improvement items, we talked, and I think we had, can't remember what percentage it was, ten percent or something like that, to all of your requests, knowing that, that may not be enough.
Yeah, come in, chief.
Yeah.
And I had a comment too. First off, on Kevin's statement about Ben also, though Derek did something too.
Yeah, Derek, you did.
He did a good job, on his notes in your budget. Let me ask you this, Ronnie, go back to the old courthouse, that's, that number that we got with HVAC system, where'd that come from?
It came from the engineer, that did the design work for that system, he did the estimate as well.
That's just, yeah, it's just one estimate.
Yeah, it's in his engineer's estimate, that's not a contractor's, albeit.
Is that the only person you can get estimates from?
We did, typically, when they do design work for us like that, we do the same thing with Phil Lester, he does an estimate for the water and sewer, and we requested one as part of the design for the HVAC.
So there's other HVAC contractors out there that we can get estimates from?
If the board decided they wanted to move forward with that, then we would get the estimates.
There's a lot of people did to evaluate that facility.
Got a lot of requests in from the departments.
I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. We've got a lot of requests in as far as expenses. Is this just a matter of letting us know what's needed, or is it?
This is what I told you about, about all the different, you come up with the.
Yeah, six point nine, or six point three.
Yeah, six point three, and I mean, you cut it down to three point nine, I mean, it's.
You talking, you talking about the capitalized capital in public buildings, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that's all the capital stuff that went over the capital improvement plan?
Correct. So there were a lot of those that they requested that we cut out.
He requested all of it in year one, and we're not, we're not funding all of it either in year one or in all, so.
And some of those requests are from other departments. And they felt like they were priorities for them. And that's why, since they're maintenance or building items, they got.
All right, non-portal mental?
Thank you, Brad.
Am I done?
Sorry, I'm done.
Okay.
Emergency medical services and emergency medicals, there is fire marshal behind that and emergency management behind that, and non-communication. And emergency service administration and medical care. I'll give you a moment to look at those.
Does that cost the medical center begin to level off from here?
It's going up, it's not going up as fast as it was. No way to really budget for that. We all over.
I think it was three years ago, the state had a backlog of cases. And they found, looks like it's already been adjusted.
Sheriff? And behind the sheriff is the jail and ambient control.
The only thing there is as far as expenses, between sheriff department and the jail, we've got an increase of about $1.5 million in expenditure.
Yeah, I know that the.
Health insurance is a huge chunk of that.
Health insurance is.
Health insurance is a lot of that.
Forcing the salaries for the.
In retirement.
The raise, yeah, it's got the four detention officers. It's got retirement that's going up. I looked at that, so yeah, that's one, because of just the number of staff. The health insurance is a pretty big issue.
And I guess some of the things I see in the line item budget deal with some inmate expenses. And I know over the past, the whole thing, over the past year, there's been a conscious effort to keep as few folks into jail as possible due to COVID. I know they've started opening the courts back up and started doing some cases. Are we seeing more confinements? Are we hearing anything now that more folks are vaccinated? Are we getting back to normal? And go ahead.
Yeah, I'm not sure what normal is right now, Mr. Berger. But in answer to your question is, we had a shutdown on the prisoner transfers from Department of Corrections on the misdemeanor confinement program, which did bring some revenue source here. I'll let Shane speak to that. But basically, when the COVID situation happened, there was, there was limited transfers of inmates. We did see a reduction of inmates in the jail facility. Now we're starting to see some of those numbers come back up. And Shane can speak to that specifically.
Yeah, the numbers are starting to level off again. We're averaging about 184, about 188 per week, give or take. What were you averaging pre-COVID? Uh, 215. But now that, that included state misdemeanor confinement inmates that were coming where we generate revenue from that. Once COVID hit, they've opened up two other prisons, older prison facilities, and started shipping people there when the jails and stuff got backlogged. So are they looking, is there any indication that they're going to start utilizing that program again where you're starting to take folks? That they still have it. Our numbers have dropped drastically for that. We, we may have five male and females right now. It's just, we're, they're not getting them throughout the state as much as they were. And I saw an increase in the security cost at the courthouse. I'm not sure which one of you would. Said it was the first increase in the past four years or so. Yes, private security, yes. And they looked at going up last year, but with the COVID hit, they didn't. And it just fizzled one time. And are they, they still the most dependable, cost efficient? Yes. Firm out? Okay.
With regards to the four officers, it looks like we've eliminated the two from the inmate litter program. Is that right? So it's, it's, how is that working out?
What they'll do is they'll, they'll net two, so they.
That's what I want to be sure to hear.
And that's what I was, you mentioned that the other day in the meeting. That's what I told, we addressed that in the budget process. So if we continue down this path, then we net two.
But it would be, on the general line of, it's going to impact us a little bit more because.
Because, yes, sir, the landfill.
Although it's, it's just two individuals, the impact on our general budgets is going to be significantly.
Three halves of them.
Yeah, something a bit more, because we pay just a percentage of their salaries out of the general budget, and we won't pay all of them. Yeah.
There was a request for a GPS tracking system to deal with, look like small items that, trying to locate them when they're stolen. Is that something that?
That, that money that you take to division on the tracking system.
Yes, it was.
The work trackers?
Yes, ma'am.
We were told about the money in the current budget, so.
So you're going to get those. All right, okay. Okay, the only note just said that was cut. Didn't say purchase it this year.
Yeah, that's part of what we do, we're going to all of them, is try to figure out what can they get this year because if they have shortfalls, this year especially because it cut a lot of stuff to get done, so.
Any other questions for them?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
They have anything for us? Do you have anything for us? I said, did you have anything for us?
No, not this time, I think. If you, if any other question or anything like this, just please get it to me and we'll, we'll respond.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Big thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Metzger, I do have a request. A couple of years ago, we got a comparison with half those in more counties, sheriff's department. And I remember it distinctly because it was difficult to compare our sheriff department budget-wise to other, because they, they did their math differently. They had to pull some, they, some included the jail in their total figure. Anyhow, I thought the comparison was useful because it did give us the number of officers that we had and gave us a comparison with how many cases that will be enveloped, if you remember. I would be interested in seeing that at your convenience sometime.
Just the jail or the sheriff's department?
No, sheriff's department.
Okay.
Some of them, some of them came as a package.
Some of that's the UCR data, I think, that we can track. It looks like COVID slowed that down, but I saw that was 2018 or 17. We could pull it for sure.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea about how effective we are in closing cases with how many people and how many vehicles.
Were you talking, you talking about investigative cases?
The whole package.
Okay, well, I will say one thing. I think we're very effective. I want to make that statement. But yes, we'll provide it.
Well, we're really relying on, we know what you're doing. We're relying on the other candidates to give us a reasonable comparison.
Sure.
And I'm just, I just found it difficult to deal with because they didn't do the math exactly the same way.
Okay. Ambush, yeah?
I got a question about the generator purchase.
Yes.
The generator purchase is pretty much maintaining the energy system?
Well, everything, we got a sewer line possession attached to it. So once the power goes off.
So you're going to need such a big generator or are you trying to run the whole facility?
We run the whole facility for the animals. You understand what I'm saying?
Oh, I understand.
We had that discussion.
We said that system. Probably we can build an energy system so we can be there.
Inspection?
Yeah, I had a question about inspection. How are we now staffing level of inspection?
We're good on the building inspection side. We have four building inspectors downstairs there. I think the new ones are all getting trained up. I think we're doing pretty well in the building.
And my question is, is it surrounds or, because I know we talked about the amount of work load has increased with the building inspections and in the, doing the, the other group, we, the other group department with septic tanks.
Environmental health.
Environmental health, yeah. And we've been, we've been, you've recommended an additional person in environmental health because of the workload, but you didn't in inspections because of the uptick.
Well, you still only have two, and now we've got four.
I'm just saying, I mean, you know, I couldn't help but notice that there's an 87% impact in both of those. And I would say that the inspectors make more site visits than environmental services, right?
Yeah.
And so.
Or equal amount, I'd say.
They didn't put in for a request this year. That point taken absolutely.
I just want, I just, you know.
We added one last year?
Yeah, we did one last year when we did the.
Probably should have done that first one.
You may have just said it, but I, I want to be sure we heard it. That we do have the, we're fully staffed as far as inspectors, but they're not fully trained and licensed yet.
The only one that's fully trained is, three is a Marlin. The other ones are working aggressively well. They're working towards it.
Do we have a timeframe for when we anticipate that happening? End of this year, end of December?
Some of, some of those requirements are even time bound from what I understand. Like you have to be a level two for a certain number of, certain period of time. That's going to be a major practice this next year. We need to have inspectors that are more than just entry level or a level one. We need to have some that are through there. And the boards already supported that by having to pay for certification plans.
So are they, are they progressing at the rate that they should? Is that the que, that's my question.
I'll have to get back to you on that one. I would, I'd like to see progressing more. But yeah, that's something that's going to be a big effort this next year.
I haven't heard that, that that was a problem. I just want to hear your question, Travis.
Which you don't.
No, go, go ahead.
The only question I have is, I hear from contractors in Moore, they can't wait till you, they can get online, request a permit, pay for a permit, get somebody out there to do it. They don't have to make a county visit. How close are we to getting that permission?
E-track it? That's why I stayed.
Welcome back, Derek.
Computers.
Well, I mean, it's going to be a great thing once it gets on.
So this is, this is. So. Track it, E-track it is what you're talking about. So as of this week, we are going to start phasing in contractors on using E-track it, with one exception, and that is the integration with Paymentis, which is our credit card processor. We will be able to make those payments across the phone, but will not, the contractor will not be able to pay it in this time. Where we are with that is this morning, my staff's been texting me back and forth about testing that out. I would say we're still a month away of getting the credit card payment tested out and fully functional. But as far as a contractor, we are ready. We have a station set up downstairs for people to sign up. And we walk them through the sign up and then kind of do them a brief training and actually talk to Charlie. At the end of last week, we're ready to start that this week.
So as far as me as a civilian, being a permit for a debt, how close, how far away are we going to be doing that?
It would be the same process. We are going to focus on contractors because they are the ones that are calling in and focusing more the most. But if a citizen comes in and wants to do the process, they're welcome to do so.
Yes, so we get that done, contractors don't love this.
In, in phase one of that, they will be able to schedule their inspections. They will be able to print their permits. They'll be able to see the status live from the field of the status of their inspection.
You give them, I guess, an email or something, notify them when that inspector is going to come out for a date so they know.
Yes, it will, they will know in the system what day the inspector will come out. And then once the inspector completes the inspection and does the update in the field, they will get a notification, if they choose, that it's, that they can log in and check the status.
These are going to track how many commitments we made and we don't make.
We will be able to track that in the system, yes.
All right, Derek, I heard you say that there's a computer downstairs. Now, will contractors who don't live in the county, will they be able to do the, sign up over the internet?
Yes.
Very good.
Yep. Once we publicize it, you could go up, there'll be instructions out there, but it's as simple as go in and act like you forgot your password, and it allows you to create a new account.
So we're going to run a few weeks without adding it just to see how it goes?
That's correct. We would like to get some contractors that come in frequently and test it out and make sure that we are comfortable with it. And then we will publicize it on the website. We actually have the page already built out. We just haven't made it public.
I know a contractor will be interested.
We're the dairy volunteers.
Thank you so much, Derek. I know this has been the worst for at least nine years now. So you finally, you finally get it done. Thank you, Ken.
All right, Ken, I don't know that Derek, as far as review officers, we've got somebody 40 hours a week?
We, we do.
Okay. And we've got county staff training to take over at some point as far as, so we've got somebody on staff all the time.
We've got, we were contracted out with PTRC to have a staff person here 40 hours, right? Correct?
Well, I'm talking about in the future. I mean, that goes, we hire somebody.
We're going to have to hire somebody. And that's what I, I'm going to announce at the proper time to ask about it. But we, you and I talked about the position, person that goes in that senior position, planning position has to be somebody that's customer oriented, plus knows what the heck they're doing with the growth that we're having. So I talked to Charlie about finding a, I know some don't like the headhunter word, but I think it's pretty crucial that we get the right person in here. And I think paying, you know, a little bit of money right now upfront will benefit, benefit us in the, in the end.
Yeah, a couple of people that I've spoken to and respect have suggested that, in this case, that it would be money well spent.
Planners are extremely hard to find right now. Every county is just stealing them from each other.
So those, the group that's hired for 40 hours a week, they've already started?
Yeah.
And that would be any plant review, any variance, any?
Everything. And if, if, if for some reason that he couldn't do it here, PTRC's got their staff and who else?
So that our contract is to have a person here 40 hours a week. He can, the person can do most everything. But if there's something that they can't do, there's a group out of Greensboro called State Code Enforcement that has very experienced planners and other people on it. And also we have the staff of PTRC that all chip in on these hard, big items, major subdivisions, things like that.
Have they been educated on what we're looking for as far as finding solutions and not being a typical planner?
I have not personally spoken to them. I know what your point is, and I'll, I'll, if not, I will convey that to Mr. Day to let him know, based on our conversations in the past.
And I just want to make sure that they are fully available. I know of, had an attorney approached me about a church trying to schedule a variance request and being told that there was nothing available. So that they backed up and gone another route. Told me that if they needed me to say anything as far as digging into it, they'd let me know if the other route didn't work.
Was that recently? Well, if you'll give us afterwards, let us know.
Yeah, well, right now they're going the easement route instead of a variance route for a cemetery. So I mean, it's just getting, just terminology. So.
Yes, we're going through this process. We, we don't want to slow anything up. So if anything happens, make sure that we know.
Mr. Review Group, they're doing a backbone.
Environmental health is fully staffed, right? I know, but I'm talking about their ordinance regulations and stuff they have.
They, they enforce their own regulations over there.
Oh, so you're saying you need this body to move, give you direction to move forward with the search?
Yeah, that would be great as long as, yeah, that'd be great.
I can see it.
I mean, well, I think there's a couple of things. Obviously, I want to make sure that we get a great fit. But also, we have a couple of projects that is in the hopper that, you know, the sooner we get a very qualified fit, the better we are. And so at some point in time, we need to start that process. And I just don't think it'd be advantageous to get this canned down the road. So I would, I would certainly think, make a motion if that's what's needed to start the process.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah, that'd be great. I'll say.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, Ms. Clerk, that, that we do what? That we hire a headhunter agency, or that we direct the county administration to hire a headhunter agency to fill this position?
Do you want to share any information on the quotes, or do we need to put limitations on it in any way?
I just, I'd recommend not to exceed twenty thousand, because that's where they're coming in right now.
Just want to make sure we know.
Well, I just, what I want to clarify.
We're going to exceed twenty.
Whereas him to take appropriate action, including hiring a headhunter up to twenty thousand.
I'd just say, give me the flexibility.
Yeah, I would amend my motion to that, but does the P R C do any provided service or the?
We'd want somebody that's.
Definitely.
We've already talked to them, and they, I mean, they're looking for us, but it's not a professional go, talk to other planners to make sure they come and locate here.
All right, that'd be my motion.
I'll say.
All right, so we're all good, everybody's clear on the motion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right, you've got that clear direction.
And I do have a question that's a follow on, waiting until that motion. At one time, we talked about growing our own, you remember? And we were going to coordinate specifically with the president of R C C about growing our own. Now, we were primarily interested in inspectors at that time, but it seemed like planners might fall in the same category. To my knowledge, there's been, we've had no results from that.
Planners are typically, I'd speak, from experience, planners are typically a four year, four year degree.
Yeah.
It's the degree I have, which I forgot, planned a long time ago, but it's the degree I have.
Say we have a fill in.
I will, I will add.
And managers are down a dozen, right?
Hey. And I have.
It used to be.
It used to be, that's right.
And I have to turn to events, the, our fellow, I think y'all are aware, Nina, will be leaving, and we just interviewed, named that there, not me. And our fellowship ends, and the new fellow that we're going to offer to as playing degree, and seems very bright, so I think I know his first project.
My follow-up employment.
Airport?
All right, wait a minute, wait a minute, we've got code enforcement and central permitting.
Oh, yeah, that's, anything in code enforcement or central permitting?
How, how was central permitting? I guess, I guess one of the questions that I have is, you know, I know last year we hired an admin in planning who ended up kind of being the director over the central permitting, so we kind of made a little bit of a change mid-year. How, how is that working?
I think it's working fantastic. It was difficult when you had, obviously, when you had some that were answering to one person, some answering to others, it works very efficiently. They're all answering to one person, seems like they're getting along very well, working well together. I've had very little complaints from, from contractors, so no news is, is good news when you're.
So this is kind, this is kind of leveling off now in central permitting?
It is. The challenge of central permitting, just full transparency, is that it means it's a, I won't say it's an entry level job, but it's a, it's a job.
Tough job.
It's a tough job, and it's a job that requires a lot of training, and it's not a high skilled pay job. And so I think our new structure and Space has done a fantastic job down there keeping everybody out. I've talked to the staff down there, they're happy, but it is just going to be one that we have to closely monitor, because there are very valuable employees.
I'm just, one of the things I'll say, Ms. Chairman, is when we're going through this change, I've shared with you before, we're bringing in new personnel. If there's any organizational issues that need to be addressed, changes, that kind of, I would suggest that you do it before we bring somebody in, and to ensure that, that, that whoever is selected is given the best opportunity to be successful in their new endeavor.
And we looked at hiring, potentially hiring a planner, but we thought, well, hire somebody in senior position, let he or she hire that individual, not us, so.
Build, build their team.
Yeah. Airport. Economic development, tourism.
Oh, good question. Tourism. What is the effect of COVID with hotels, hotels?
I, I don't know the answer offhand that I can find out. I'm sure it was pretty impactful. Didn't we have, we, yeah, yeah.
I just haven't heard, I just wanted to let them know what y'all are thinking about.
It is a good place, Tom, I agree with you.
Okay, thank you.
Corporate extension.
Well, maybe it's a job.
Where's Forest Replant?
It's at other public safety. Let's get that.
Why don't I, Forest Replant?
Yeah.
Page. Should I send it further on?
No, I think we've already passed it, we may have.
Seventy-three in this book.
They said wing or damn.
Seventy-three in this book.
So, I passed it on to the guy. What number? Seventy-three.
I just have a question on the.
What number? Seventy-three, other public safety, tab twenty-five.
The amount?
We had a large increase. Forest Service, forty percent county share contribution. Previously, we budgeted in the sixties, now you budgeted ninety thousand four hundred dollars.
We went, we've gone back and forth with them, it's a truck, they have a truck that needs to be replaced, it's one that hauls a large amount of water, and so they're going to rotate down the existing truck, which has got, I remember, a little over a hundred thousand miles, which is.
This will go down next year.
Yeah, this is one, it's a one year thing. We've been in touch with the district forest.
Is it water to put out fires or?
Yeah, it's a water truck, yeah, like a fire, a fire brush truck.
Yeah, okay, so we got them trucks. So their old truck, what are we going to do with that old truck?
We don't own any of that, it's.
We just get the back four.
Forty percent of the cost of that forest program that happened, have you in your account?
So we count that as it kind of?
And that's their people.
Fair enough.
Anything else?
And they, they cover the counties, right?
Yeah.
They, Kevin, they can, they cover different counties.
Right. Oh, I know, I know.
I don't know what the other county is give them for a vehicle, because I'm pretty sure it probably go to all, all the counties that ask for a vehicle.
Corporate extension.
I guess Craig's point on that is whether or not there's, are we paying for part of it, or paying for all of it?
No, that's, we're not paying for the whole truck.
We're not? Okay.
Soil and water. Integrated health, again, this is.
Real quick, to call off attention, I'd like to get an update on what they're doing. I haven't heard from them in a while. They haven't done it for last year, they haven't done a whole lot, because I haven't had an update. I mean, if they ain't doing nothing, what are we paying for?
You don't pay a hundred percent. Integrated health, again, this is the last year we've got the, the funding through K B R, and so that's, we have to think this year, we might need to get the, I guess, measurements of what we've done for the past several years from Felicia's group to find out if that's something you all want to continue in the future.
When are we going to start looking at making that decision? We're budgeting next year.
Well, we need to look at it sooner than that. That, Felicia kind of the indication, we're going to start pulling that data together to find out what impact we're making, because huge, I would recommend, no, if it's not corporate, I think it is.
So we'll, we'll look into that this fall, late, late summer, fall?
Public health, under thirty-four, or thirty-three.
Hey, I just want, real quick, want to give a shout out to Trey. I think they did actually, well, everybody in town did, crowd there and cover the thing over R C C. That's pretty good.
Yeah, we're there, Trey did, he was there all, all time, I think he did.
There was, there was a lot of people. A lot of room to shop, I mean, from Team Massey home, I mean, there's a lot of, of things.
Anything ever talking to health that you want to go over?
Well, I got, just to talk about pharmacy, many of the employees know they get prescriptions from their pharmacy while they're at work, you ain't got to go somewhere. Well.
Still, you shouldn't abandon your local pharmacies. You think about it, if everybody did that, if all county, city employees didn't utilize a local pharmacy, they'd buy somewhere around two thousand customers.
You can say the same thing to our doctors.
Or you're, you're, you're going to drive, you're going to drive, we're going to back to position?
Well, the other thing is, if we do utilize the local pharmacy and the reimbursements are as bad as we understand, we're going to cost, we're just going to cost the county even more money.
I love to find out what, what the problem is there.
Mental health, speaking up. That's our contribution to.
You're right.
Extreme competition means a stop.
I think just answer a couple of those.
Social services?
Oh, I got a question for Felicia.
Felicia?
Anybody like to hear Felicia talk?
Yeah.
Felicia, I just want to know an update about this foster care program. You're losing money, but we're continuing to get more and more foster cares, so I don't know the solution.
So you are talking about the Family First Prevention Services Act? Well, great question. We continue to get a trickle of information coming in from the state. So at this point, what we've tried to do is look at our overall services and kind of predict what we think is going to be our revenues for that. In the same token, Lance and I have been meeting with Cardinal on the M O U for a specific foster care program, it's the Foster Care Reinvestment Services. And we actually had a meeting with that last week to go over that M O U, couple of little minor changes that we had to make in that, but we want to take those funds and try to use those to help promote and support our foster youth.
Are we advertising or putting out there for foster care parents? Because I know that.
Yes.
We've had a big update this past year.
Yeah, so actually, I approved a little, little card that we're going to be giving out to agencies. We're going to be asking some of our community partners to put in a little card, like if you go and pick up medication, or if you get a pizza, things like that, so that we're getting that information out there. I've got two new license on workers who have wonderful ideas, I actually met with them last week. We are talking about going to different festivals, getting information out there to do massive recruitment, and I actually gave them a, a pretty healthy goal of the number of foster parents I'd like to see here locally.
That's great. I wish we had more foster care, but last question, fraud investigation, how's it going? I haven't had an update on that in a while.
Right now, a lot of your fraud stuff is, though we're getting those referrals and we're processing some of that, a lot of your collections are kind of on hold with certain programs because of the pandemic.
I heard we have a big backlog of investigations that need to happen.
We ha, we're down a worker again, so we hired a, a person, they came on, we trained them, they, you know, we had a great team, and this person got a better opportunity. And so, yes, that has caused us to be delayed in some of our processing.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I do, hang on one second, I was just trying to find which department it was in. But it looked like there were several vehicle things that, P C M program is going to be funded by Partnership for Community Care.
Are you talking about public health?
Yeah, public health, yeah, I think that's what that is. But have they changed, changed name, gone, what, what? In looking them up, it looks like there's kind of been some shakeup there.
From Partnership for Community Care?
Yeah.
So we have a transition going on with Medicaid that has caused some of our processes that are going to be changing, and we've had some program changes at public health.
Mm-hmm. So I guess what I'm saying, it looked like it was, was it North Carolina Community Care Networks has assumed the Medicaid primary care case management responsibilities previously held by the Partnership for Community Care. So is that, who, who's going to be taking care of some of these things? Like I said, in looking at it, it just said, let me pull it up. I apologize for being slow on this. For example, vehicle insurance costs for four vehicles assigned to the Pregnancy Care Management Program at four hundred and ten dollars. Program is funded by the Partnership for Community Care, but in your looking up Partnership for Community Care, it looks like they're out of business.
So there's been a transition, what, what you're seeing there is, they're not exactly out of business, you're seeing a transition in the programs and what they're doing because of the upcoming Medicaid transformation.
Okay.
And if you would like, I do not have a problem, I can go ahead and have Trey give you kind of a, a couple paragraphs of what we're doing internally with that particular area, because he's been having meetings with the supervisor of the, the group that we have at the local public health department, of what that's going to, how that's going to impact us as we go into Medicaid transformation.
Yeah, I know we've all been hearing some of these transformations, and, and to be honest, it, it just confuses me. But yeah, if he, if he could do something short and concise, just get it to our clerk, she'll disseminate it to us.
Sure. Not a problem, we can do that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Veteran Services? Let me ask you, but Veteran Services, the weight you're placing on those veterans who are coming? Don't know. They don't.
It's the stand down, I don't think they did it this year.
Can you check one? Other Human Services, and I would point out that we had a request from Genesis Ministries for ten thousand, and we put in three thousand for that simply because in the past, we've helped with the rents going and the redirections of property in the county.
And this is a, like some kind of grant, Ian?
It's just a, no, it's just a, a one-time contribution for, for, they'd asked for ten thousand, I, I mean, they do a great job in the communities.
What, what they've done is, you know, it was all, all female facility, now they're expanding to include men, and they're just asking for a little help to, to progress that to the men program too. So they're going to make some program.
How do we determine what nonprofits we fund?
Well, I tell you, in the past, we've done it on a case by case back basis, but, but we had, we had deferred many requests, and this is the first one I've heard about in the last year or two.
Yeah, no reason, you know, we had, had funded Rents Go with the past, they provide a similar service that Genesis Ministry, but we.
They facilitate what we would be doing anyhow, is that correct or not?
It's a, what a church should be, not the government.
This is a.
Well, it's helped the individual.
Yeah, it's, it's the rehab of the, of people with domestic violence that are in domestic violence that are.
Also substance abuse.
It's a good thing, for everyone, but I don't know.
Well, I, I like Commissioner Burden's point there. I don't want to get back to where we were having to vote on two or three requests from totally worthwhile charities. Yeah, and I'm just trying to figure out, is this the only request we had this year? How did it get into the budget? You know, I'm not saying it's not a legit or a very good organization, it's just, there's a lot of good organizations, where, where does the government draw the line as far as donating to other people's money to non-primes?
Point well taken. I don't think there are any other questions that I've been recalling. Let you off here if we didn't. These services?
I think you've got, our earlier discussions, I think you've got some. I'm sitting here looking at your line item too. Reviewing the, reviewing. There again, it's just a lot. We've had this conversation. And although it is a, I appreciate what's been done, if I look at the, the line item, essentially, it's a, it's a program that has grown, and even what the, what's been done to date, you're still. it's a program that has grown, and even what the, uh, what's been done to date, you're still, $36,000 from the actual in 1920.
12% reduction.
And that's, let me give you a chance to look at that again.
Okay. Library?
Once we do have, uh, the, the Daymark Building retrofitted for U Services Child Sport, we're gonna try and make some moves as we've discussed with the administration. I think that might come up as our swing agenda.
Think now would be good for a Yoda club.
Other culture, and again, this is, as, as Mr. Burden had asked, how do we pick it? It's just a, in the past, it's been case by case. It does have the $28,000 expenditure for the PEG channel in there. Now that's for college.
What, what?
So the, the college has a PEG channel as well?
They're still paying for?
Well, we get revenue for it as well.
We just count the pastor.
It's a pastor, right?
Got a bit of your side.
Aging, disability, and transit, those fronts just pass through, but pastor, it was, yeah. Public schools? Is that, you put RCC behind the public schools? Transfer in and out, this shows you that your water and sewer fund, unfortunately, has gone down quite a bit, not enough. I don't like to see zeros, but anyway, it's gone down quite a bit. Then behind that is the contingency. Capital reserve, anything there?
That's just your projects, and we talked about it, but that transfer is a dollar fund, it changed.
There's seven on that, if you want to take a moment to look at or what you're all about, different reserve funds.
So is that the part that's under other funds expenditures in your, the budget you emailed to us? When do we get to that?
Yes, that's right now, yeah.
So this is as a general fund, this is the other funds.
So you've got a department request for $1.1 million, and your note says you'll take it to us during the current fiscal year.
Which one?
On page 47 of what you emailed. On 47, under other funds expenditures.
Let's see.
Talks about the gas bill project.
Oh, it's the, yeah, 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 it's the landfill gas, well, I believe, has that already been approved?
Yeah, that already approved, yeah.
Okay, that's not a new thing, that's, okay.
No, no, that was the, the big, uh,
That's, that note's an old, that is, cause it says we'll be taking it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, these notes go back in March.
Back in March, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Anything to point out, Pat, on the reserves that you picked up?
Not any change on the fire district, right?
Those ones.
I did something else that's under there, and we did talk about it a little bit earlier, but I'm just, make sure I wrap my hands around it. Capital reserve transfer out, and it may be located somewhere else as well, but, you know, we talked about, self-iv construction and set aside for the bulldozer.
Yes.
It wasn't under this part, which is page 48, it's not requested in the budget.
It's under, if you're looking at the, the personal, this we submitted, it's on page 102 of that book right there.
Okay, all right, I knew you talked about it earlier today, but then,
See, this is me, this is something, um, we're gonna push the department in their request to be setting stuff aside. As part of creating that, um, that was all happening at the same time as the budget process. So that's me adding that in there, saying we need to start saving for these projects.
And again, water and sewer, it's worked out fine, we're, we're environment link now, we've contacted that service out, and everyone, great job, boys.
So we have, we have employees, right?
No, we have, no, we have a portion of several employees in water and sewer, just because they still deal with the billing and,
But as far as the staff itself and environment, like, we contract that portion totally out.
The employees that we had in that department, they're transferred maintenance or where?
We had one that we didn't fill, and we had one that transferred for somebody who retired in maintenance. So we didn't have to terminate anybody.
You just backfill that position from this position. And instead of paying it on the enterprise fund, we pay it aside for the private fund. Tooling.
Yes. Page 62 of that email document. It says advertising with brochures in Asheville. Are we really getting any bang for our buck out of Asheville?
I can find that, that's a good question.
Okay, and then what is Blue Wave Brandon, which is on page 63?
Page 60 what?
63, Special Projects, Blue Wave Brandon, $30,000.
I think that's advertising our stream conflict.
It's the waterways, I know it's the waterways.
Rockland County rivers and streams.
Okay. That's just a lump sum for all that advertising for, okay.
I'll find out advertising in Asheville, see if it's coming.
Yeah, well, it's,
I know they really like to come here, so we,
Well, the interesting thing on that note, it's got already used Charlotte, and St. and Greensboro Airport has got the Asheville. So that's why it kind of just stuck out.
Yeah, and we've done some advertising in Asheville, I don't, I don't know about that. I'll, I'll find out what bank will get for that, but, uh, and that's, that's all I've got.
One thing that I, that I asked Pat during the break, that I very much appreciate, Mr. Chair, is that, I, I think it's important that she relayed a comment a couple of meetings back when we was talking about this meeting, and we was discussing, uh, she gives a document, talking about what her preliminary plans were for the budget cost. One of the things that stuck in my, in my mind's eye was, and my colleague, Commissioner Travis, talked about benefits, and we talked about doing raises for our employees through the performance-based plan. But share again what you shared with us about how much more it's gonna cost us this year with this, our labor cost is gonna be next year compared to this year with the same number of employees.
So the, the total of everything, and I'll go through in a second what's in here, is gonna be, um, right about $3.3 million in, increased cost. Now that includes,
And that's before we do any raise?
Well, no, that's, okay, so that does include, that amount does include the one-third study and the raise.
Oh, so if we bank those too well?
Okay, so if we just do retirement and insurance alone, that's two, um, yeah, $2,250,000.
Two point, a little over 2.3 million dollars.
Actually, it's about 2.5, it's 2.5 million dollars retirement insurance alone.
And that's just to cover the, the number of employees we have right now for next year. Without doing anything.
That's an increase, that's an increase.
That's an increase, that's an increase.
Increase, without doing anything, without, uh, nothing.
Correct.
And I think that's just important for the folks to know, is that when we sit here and we, we, we go and, I know it may sound like we're doing line item by line item, but we're asking the tough questions because when we start doing our budget process, that means we start out with a $2.5 million in the hole that we have to, we have to look at, consider when we start making obligations for, uh, what we're gonna do next year. And that's a big number, that's a little over three pennies of your, I mean, of your, uh, at the law, of your property tax. Each penny brings in, what, seven, we said we projected $775,000. So if you did math, that's gonna be about three pennies.
So it sounds like that, that one-third study's gonna cost us about $800,000.
That's about four, something.
It's about 400, and then the merit, um, program is about 450,000.
Okay, so the merit and the one-third and the bonus will be about 800, okay.
What's that cola, there was a cola?
There was a cola this year.
I just,
You talked about from last year, cause I saw some of the verbiage in there.
Okay, and so I just share that because I think it's important
that when we sit here talking about what we're gonna have to do to mitigate the cost of the insurance, that's on top, that's, that's on top of that. I mean, it's, you know, that's, that gets it back up by the time you do the insurance mitigation and the, uh, cost of living, now we're at 3.5. So, it's just a, a fun fact to know.
I wonder what the employees would want to have, a merit raise or, well, we want our insurance increase.
Well, depends on if you ask the ones, well, I'm sure that, that doesn't have, doesn't have to provide it for the families that want it. It's, it's, it's a catch 22, it's a catch 22. But I, I do want, like I said, I appreciate you grabbing that information for us because that is a very pertinent fact, fact, when we sit here having these discussions. And it's not unique to us, and keep in mind, that, that 2.3 million dollars has nothing to do with any decisions we made, of course, this year. This is just, uh, the, the state levying on our retirement system, how much we have to contribute for each employee, and it's a little bit more if they are sworn law enforcement officer. It's a,
Supposed to go to the index?
Oh, it's gonna, and it's not gonna slip down.
All right, Commissioner Burden, you've got a couple of questions?
Couple of things, I know we've pledged it a lot, different departments for conferences. Is there any indication they're gonna start back in the in-person conferences?
Yes, yes.
And then, I know we got some printouts this morning, we've covered the shared savings. I know there's also the forfeiture fund, any of those funds that ultimately come to us for approval a- as far as expenditure? I think we ought to see what's in those funds.
Okay, like if you come with the amount or?
Yeah, the balance. Yeah, the balance in, in any of those funds.
I'm glad you brought it up.
And, you know, also those COVID funds, anything we've got there as far as a separate breakdown. And then I'd like to see a chart, our rate is 69 and a half. I'd like to see a chart that shows how much that 69 and a half goes to each department. How much is to education, so our education tax is blank.
You have a chart that has like 200 little, I mean, you need to be, you're talking about,
Do a list, I don't care how you do it.
General, education?
Uh, talking registered deeds tax department for the future.
You gonna have that pie chart, you gonna have like a hundred plus?
It don't have to be a pie, it can just be a list.
Okay, got it.
It, it can just be a list, so, you know, how much is each one making up that 69 and a half?
We do that at the, with that thing we send out the tax bills, we do it at a higher clump, you know, we have a different, but we can definitely do it by that, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, gentlemen, I'm gonna propose we take a recess for about five minutes, and, uh, then we'll get back and we'll take the next item up.
Yes.
Guys, we're back in session, we'll go to our next item, Mr. Mann.
Capital Improvement Plan, I asked Paul if he would prepare himself to discuss this, you all, so. Yeah, so, uh, we've discussed the capital improvement plan, uh, with the board, I believe it was a couple of months ago, uh, just to give an overview, and, uh, I wanted to cover it again, just, uh, as I mentioned earlier, to request the board to consider approval with the, with the budget process this year. So you should have in front of you, there's three different capital improvement plans. The first is for general capital projects, um, and I'll really just highlight what has changed from what you've seen before. Based on our meetings, on the left-hand side, you'll notice that the projects, some of them are bold and some of them aren't. The bold signifies things that are new, that we haven't had before, whereas the not-bolder replacements or, um, you know, fixing things we've already had. As we talked about, it's roughly $2.5 million is what the CIP for this next year is requested at. That would change after you take the sixth one to buy out, uh, from the general fund, uh, moving over to the capital reserve fund. But, um, see, year one, all the projects that we've discussed already, debt service, these are through well fixed, um, and, uh, at the bottom, you'll see, uh, the contributions that are the revenues for this capital improvement plan. So the goal of a CIP is that year one matches exactly what's in the budget document. So with the exception of the Workforce Development Center debt that hasn't been issued just yet, this lines up exactly with what you'll find in your, in your budget document. Again, it counts on five and a half cents going to capital every year. So, yeah, any, any questions kind of on the overall, uh, for general capital? Okay?
No, let me, let me just comment real quick. One of the things we've talked about is setting this up not only for programmatic capital, but for facilities, so that over 20, 25 years, we, we can project and set money aside for things like roofs, parking lots, HVAC systems, so that there'll be money there and it won't impact the taxpayer unduly during any given year.
Sure, absolutely.
And that, and that's part of what we've done.
Yes, so this covers the first five years, what Ronnie has worked on with his, uh, improvement plan over 20 or so years, is just trying to get a handle on, um, you know, when those things are coming up.
Right, that, that's what I want to be sure of, since what we're talking about today is just showing five years. But, uh, behind the scenes, he's also got that 20-year plan that'll, that'll sit there and help us in the future years.
He does, and this only covers large capital items. We may have other stuff that we're, we're setting towards, but the cutoff for this, at least internally, is $50,000, unless it's unique enough that it needs to be on here, which is very rare.
Right, okay.
The facilities will coincide with this, actually, have you set up that thing yet with the facilities?
Okay, so we got things to go over that.
We do. Yeah, so there may even be a future kind of how we do a set aside for IT infrastructure, there may be a, a set aside for, you know, future facility repairs that has detail back behind it. It's a continual set aside. Vehicles, vehicles, same way, we've got, uh, we're working right now on a multi-year vehicle replacement plan. We do, I think, a pretty good one for the first year, um, but we're putting one together for, I've got right now, at least the next five years, about what's gonna be replaced, how it's gonna move, that kind of thing.
Tell me, well, there's nothing on here for schools.
So the schools have their, they wouldn't fall under the general capital reserve fund, they have their own, uh, reserve fund, and that's where that 4.1, I believe it is, million dollars that they have left over in their reserve is. And I think that's part of what the board was discussing earlier, uh, with needing to get with the schools to determine what projects do they have coming up, what can fit with the debt before the study that the pockets have worked on.
I bring it up, uh, there was a line item, $2,299,815, which is a fairly specific number, set aside for future schools projects. And that sounded like a capital investment.
That's your lottery fund proceeds, I think.
Well, that's the, the, the reserve amount, so the amount of revenue they're bringing in, less the debt that's already existing, it's just that reserve for future school capital, we don't know what that need is yet. They'll just sit in the fund balance of that school capital reserve fund until they come with the need.
Yeah, I thought that's what you were gonna tell me. The reason I bring it up is, uh, there had been an inquiry about a potential investor here in the county to build a bunch of housing funds, and they had a question about strategic, you guys know something?
Wait, how do you use a time plan, no?
Go ahead, I think you were, I'm sorry.
I was just trying to find out if there was such a thing as a strategic building plan. I know what Sanja's doing over there, but as far as a replacement school?
The schools have got one, I've seen one of their capital improvement plans, it's a long and very expensive, um, plan. You remember seeing that, it was a while back.
I believe they just completed an update of that, uh, January or February, it was presented in their meeting.
Yeah, well, what I've seen, if you will, the new, uh, high school that serves 1,500, 2,000 people, it's gonna cost $65 million if, if you do it like several other counties around us. And it, it just seems like it's a void, and I thought capital improvements, uh, just to confirm, the capital improvement plan is not considered any sort of major investment like that.
No, there's no schools, uh, projects in here just yet, the funding is there, or the funding that is dedicated to it is there? There's separate capital reserve, but I think that's where the conversations need to happen with the schools on what is their priority moving forward, cause I know they have a, a ton of needs, but the needs far exceed the resources, so what is number one, two, three?
Pat, did you say you were gonna work with the schools with a, um, Mitch on the,
Right, and I have a draft plan now, he's doing some final modifications, very small stuff, but I have, we have the amounts that, um, are affordable. Uh, I think the initial conversation, I think the initial conversation that started this, it's been a couple of months ago, was the need for a new elementary school, whether it's a new school or whether it's pods and what can we afford.
That's south end, right?
Yeah, so we, yes, so we've done that based on what we thought a new school, and kind of come up with some various scenarios as far as can you do a new school, can you do a new school, plus maybe a lot of roof repairs and HVAC repairs, that's a lot of that that's on their list. And then also a scenario of overall total, what can you afford to issue in that? So we have various scenarios that we're ready to some final modifications, like I said, on the actual draft document. So we're ready with numbers when the school is ready with their plan of where their party needs are at.
Well, I'm very concerned about the plan because there are various ways to meet the need, and some plans are far less expensive than others. You answered my question. This doesn't include that compensation that you guys are on top of elsewhere.
Well, I will clarify that the plan that, that affordability study that I have done, that I've asked to be done, is on the restricted sources of revenues for schools, the lottery funding and the restricted portion of the sales tax. The affordability study does not include any county contribution to that as far as tax rate or anything like that, so that would have to be a different conversation and updated plan if there's a need greater than they can afford with their restricted money, just to clarify with the plan on slide.
But by statute, county is responsible for.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So are there any questions on any particular projects that are, that are in the general capital section of the CIP? Next up is landfill. Landfill kind of has to operate like a, rather than just a CIP, a whole unplanned, because it doesn't have dedicated, its revenues cover everything, not as opposed to having like cents like you do in general capital. So you can see there what is proposed. Probably the biggest item to, to keep an eye on, on this is the landfill fund balance at the bottom. You can see in the green, right above the green where it says landfill fund balance, that's how much this plan appropriates in their fund balance. And the bottom is a best estimate of what that would do to their unrestricted and closure of closure parts of their fund balance. Enterprise funds are very difficult to get that number exactly right, can change dramatically. So, I mean, me personally, I don't think, fund balance needs to be there at minimum where it is recommended on this, to make sure that we have money in case there's some new state law that's passed, some accounting guideline that we have to follow. Here in the past two years, between the gas well and the set aside that was required a couple of years ago, that's like three point two million dollars that we had to do, is not of our doing, it's a state or federal law change.
Another unfunded ban.
Exactly, yes. And I think that probably keep getting worse.
I assume the forty is in your figures, so that the, the blue line matches the green line is in the landfill fund balance.
Correct. And important to point out on here too is that this CIP counts on a dollar tipping increase every year for the next four years. That's not to say that has to be that way or anything, that's what's built into this to keep that fund balance above, really more than half a million, that will fund balance.
That's a moving target.
That's a moving target.
What I think, y'all indicated, I mean, what I'm hearing today is a little bit different than what I heard before. Today I'm here and we're slowly feeling the bandaid off as far as those tax increases. What I heard before was we were doing a tax increase, a small one, and then see what we could do as far as operational to cut that figure down.
Yeah, the, yeah, it just depends on the, like, for instance, deposit shell, if it adds nine more years to the life of it, and, you know, if we do the, like the, the guy in the consultant said, if we do certain things to, to the equipment to keep it longer, I mean, it, it could be fifty cents, it could be nothing.
Also, certainly the goal, I think this is a, I, I know I feel comfortable that one dollar is at least what's needed, but I think we are going to continue working hard so that we have years that it doesn't have to be that high.
This passing this, by no way obligating this body to, to increase tipping field a dollar. This is going to be updated every year, so next year it may show, potentially see we have a good year, it may show zero.
This is just a plan, it has no legal ties on the board whatsoever. What's, what's legal is the budget, this is just trying to plan for what the budget's going to look like. Any questions about anything on, on that? And the final, the final one on here is the water and sewer. CIP, I imagine this one is one that's going to change quite a bit with, you know, our money coming in and one of those being, what would be unallowable use being infrastructure, water and sewer infrastructure. Right now, you can see we're still not to the point where the water and sewer funds don't require transfer from the general fund, which is why now projects are recommended have, if we get grant money or other outside money, certainly we have a list of projects that we can go after. And if everything plays out the way, this is laid out here, you can see in fiscal year twenty twenty-six, we will have broke even. Now, there's some pretty big assumptions in here, the, the largest being this approved development revenues line that's at the bottom. These are developments that we know about that are big, and we, we're doing our best estimate on when they're going to, on their schedule, when they're going to build things out and sell houses, but that's a, a best guess, highly dependent on the economy. Yeah, so those are the capital improvement plans, like I said, we request, but probably it's part of the same motion where you approve the budget ordinance or a separate motion to find a capital improvement plan. So I just want to answer any questions that you had.
Now, I want to thank you guys for putting this together and for the other plan that we're working on, because I think this is something important to ensure that the citizens don't have undue surprises. Private business does this kind of thing all the time, and I think this is one area where we're, we're, we're doing the right thing, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you, Mr. Chair. Since this is an entry point, an initial point, a block concrete, so to speak, I would like that motion to approve the CIP is presented to us at this point.
We need a budget. That's coming with the budget.
You're doing the budget talks due, due meeting. You can approve it, uh, the June seventh.
Jointly or separately?
Either way, you can make that a part of your motion.
I thought, excuse me, I thought you were asking for it a few minutes ago.
I, I understand, yeah, we'll do this in, in June seventh. Is, we'll have a public hearing on this, and then we will hopefully take up a vote at that time.
You're not required to have any hearings or anything on this, but you want to include that as part of your budget.
We'll have a public hearing on the budget.
Correct.
All right, very good. Gentlemen, any questions? Mr. Manager, any new business?
Yes, so most of you all, we received a phone call this weekend from somebody that lives on the southwestern part of County in regards to their lack of water supply to their homes. I contacted Ronnie, I want to come up here, contacted Ronnie and had his staff go out there to talk to property owners to find out who did not, just ran out of water. We had, I think he found that there were three out there. We asked the lady, the, the individual, if they were interested in, you know, what, what they seeking us for, and I think they indicated that they weren't interested in public water. Of course, if you did run public water out there, it is very expensive, as, you know, it's, in my opinion, I think that the, that they're all in the same aquifer and they're, the water level has dropped over there, and in my opinion, I think that the, their wells need to be dropped, and I don't know if that's a place where the, the county needs to be in the business. As you mentioned, Commissioner Burge, we're not in the private sector, that's, it seems like a private sector thing, but that's just for, for discussion. I want to know which direction you all want to give us.
Well, when I got the phone call, my, my concern was just to determine the, how big of an issue it was, not that it, you know, to kind of wrap your arms around the issue, to see if it was one house, three house. During the phone call, I was expecting as many as six.
Yeah, she told me as many as a hundred, which.
Okay, and at that point in time, you know, you just, my, my interest was mainly just to kind of get your arms around what the issue was, not that there's, county could provide a solution, but we surely could be responsive if it was a, a, or not respond, but to help, help our citizens there if it was a relatively large geographical area, help facilitate some type of response, help them get some type of response, but not necessarily is it a, something that we can repair, certainly.
I think I know what that would be, I just want to start by thanking you guys for being so responsive, because it is our business to find out if it's our business, and that's what you guys were doing. I appreciate that the lady was very polite, that she was talking a hundred, that was a much different story than three. So, and if she adheres to her statement about they, they're not interested in public water, it's all in their plate. Now, have we already sent a truck out or rented a truck, it's my water?
No, we checked, we checked on it. There is, we can get one through Davis Water Company, which is a, a company, they pull water out of our hydrants, they provide this service in other areas, and we can get a truck out there, get, you know, the board would like for us to.
No, I spoke to the resident yesterday, and she has a well drilling company contracted to come out today and deepen the well, and they think this will take care of the problem.
She just left me an email, a voicemail, I went back there listening, she's asking the county what the county is going to do, and my responsibility is her, unless you guys say otherwise, it's the responsibility of the property owner.
Yeah, it's not a county issue. Well, I'd like to be kept informed, but that's about it at this point.
Yeah, I don't know that, you know, they're, they're going to deepen the wells, I don't know.
Yeah, of course. Well, I mean, mine's, my well's about there too, I have to drop my bowl a couple hundred feet, I understand what she's saying.
Very good. Any other items?
No, sir.
All right. That being said, our next meeting is June seventh at six thirty PM. Again, as I said, we'll have a public hearing to, to talk about the budget, and hopefully we'll have a motion to take that up and this CIP plan as well. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would just add that if the manager will be in contact with us with any, as a result of these conversations and deliberations, if there's any changes to the document that was provided to us, that you would be in contact with us. And I'd also add that, also I appreciate that when we got into the, the, some of the justifications, it clarified some of the questions that I had. So to be honest, that, that emailing that you sent out, that can, that answered a lot of my questions that I didn't have to circle around, circle back with it. So I just encourage you, if we could maybe get that version next time, the hard copy, I want to really get a high pass on that.
This Burge lives next door to these wells, I suggest we put him in charge of whatever goes on.
There you go. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll have to make a motion.
Do we have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.